Father again, Lord, we thank you for another day of life. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings. Thank you for lovin' us and watching over us. Lord, we just continue to pray for the ones that are sick, the ones that are hurting in some way. Lord, we just pray for this body here tonight and the people here tonight. Pray for each one of their families. Lord, we just ask guidance and direction in all we do, forgiveness of our sins. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd be fucking first in, or then Hamish here in the middle?
Yeah, I guess. Even though I'm feeling pretty. Welcome everybody to the Winfield City Council meeting, June the 2nd. It's the first time we've been back probably, I guess, eight weeks, two months, close to it. Been having Zoom meetings. I don't know if people have been watching, watching it on Zoom or keeping track. I believe TV guy here, I think he's been zooming in with us when we do it. And the paper, I think, has been getting where they keep articles, wrote where they could keep things wrote in the paper, kind of keep people up to speed. That, that being said, I've had a couple of meetings, which I have meetings with people all the time. I've had a couple of meetings. And I remember one time when we had a public hearing, we had a public hearing and it come up, the issue come up, it comes up quite often. People say, well, I don't read the paper. I don't get the paper. Must have looked on TV. Well, I don't, I don't watch that TV show and I don't, I don't watch that probe, I don't watch that channel. You know, I used, still, I still consider myself young, but I'm getting older. When I was growing up, you know, I always, kind of was bad to say things or say something about something that I knew nothing about. And as I get older and try to consider myself getting a little bit wiser, I have learned kind of maybe to keep my mouth shut a little bit if it's, I don't know nothing about what's being said or what I want to say something about. I, I, you know, when before I become running for mayor, the reason I run for mayor was not to hold a position to say that I was mayor of Winfield. I've been in business, I was raised in this town, I was raised right there in this country, and I always thought that things could be a different way. And I wanted to know why they wasn't being able to be a different way and why things couldn't be like it is, you see in other cities and different things. But I was like a lot of people is now, people that's older than me, people that's dead and gone. I run my mouth and I said things about people and things that I didn't really know nothing about. But I, I am, I'm in enough state to now to admit that I did that. I run my mouth and I said things about something I didn't know nothing about. And I catch myself every now and then now saying stuff about things that I know nothing about. And it's just like all this stuff that's going on politically in Washington and different places. I don't know a whole lot about it, you know? But over time, you learn by watching from other people's mistakes and other, what other cities has done that's not right and try to learn from their mistakes before we make the same mistake. And once, when I ran for office and I got the privilege of being in this position, seemed real quick like, all those years, I didn't know what I was talking about. And I know, you know, it's just like right now, but people says, well, we come to the city council, we didn't come for preaching or come to hear nobody tell their testimony or if nobody come tell their life story. That's fine and dandy, it's a public building. If nobody wants to listen to it, I'm sitting in this position right there, the door is open right here, it wants open. I got put in this position by the people of this city. That, that not one or two people put me in, the majority of the people put me in this position. Cause they either had faith in me or they didn't like the one that's running with me. I mean, I don't know, I don't know those reasons. And I mean, it floored me that I was able to come and serve in this capacity. But when it's serving in this capacity, I'm going to give it a hundred and ten percent mentally for his thinking and try to for his hands on and feet to the ground, for his trying to make this a better city and a better place to live and try to take care of every citizen in it, regardless of who they are. I feel like that everybody's complaint needs to be heard and needs to be addressed and needs to be looked at, and that's exactly how I try to do it. I have no personal agenda myself to do anything in this position except for make this city a more positive and a better place to live and for people to be satisfied that they're living here. It's just like America, if people don't like it, they need to get out. Now, that's my opinion. I, I get fed up with how things are and how social everything has to be. This one's doing this and that's this. I mean, I get frustrated and I feel like a lot of my frustrations now is because it's an embarrassment to me for this country to act the way it is in all these bigger cities and these streets and it being allowed. It bothers me that people can go to jail for trying to go to church, but they can burn down a building and tear a car up and hit police officers over the head and do all this and not get, go to jail. I have issues with that. And I, I've never realized, and I mean, back in the day, I never thought I'd ever have a cellphone or have a pager or anything, then end up having a cellphone and a pager and a two-way radio, you know, and because it's just the way things went. But I mean, everybody's different. Somebody, everybody's feelings different, everybody has a different opinion. And, you know, everybody has the same, to me, has the same right as the person beside them or whatever as far as what needs, that they can do or speak or how they act, but when they get out of line, I feel like it needs to be addressed. I never realized that there were so many, going through the years that I went through, I never realized that there were so many people that just needed somebody to talk to. And that, that, if you look at it, that, that, a lot of people just need somebody to talk to. I mean, they, and, and, and it, and the fact that the people, you know, I don't like getting, a lot of times I do because I always have to go back to it because I know that I'm where I'm at by the grace of God. And I mean, I always go to that. I mean, I always, always go, it always pulls me back to that, to knowing that I wouldn't be where I'm at every day if it wasn't for the grace of God. And for people needing to show, show their expressions and their feelings and everything on, for the world wide web, on Facebook, it bothers me that so many people needed somebody and they want to be heard, but they want to do it in the way that they're doing it instead of doing it in a proper way. And, and, and doing it and saying things that they know nothing about. And a lot of people in different places forget, I mean, they know, but they forget. And they have a tendency just to let it go by and just, and not even think about what they're doing and what they're saying. I mean, everybody does that. But as, as this story unfolds, as we go through this council meeting, every day, everything to me is a story. It ends up being that way because of what happens and, and different issues that happen and things that can happen. There's a lot of stuff that you've got to go through to make this happen. And it bothers me, it's just like, I don't know how the heck the federal government could come up just that fast and start printing all that money and just send it everywhere. But I mean, they did. I mean, I don't understand how they can do that, that fast as they did it. But anyway, things like that don't work that fast in the city government. If we have an issue like rioting or whatever, we got 13 police officers, plus one or two that's on reserve, that have quit, that we still work some, that they've got, had to go because the pay wasn't good enough or whatever, but they still try to fill in. The governor's got access to the National Guard Armory. She can send them wherever she needs to send them. She's got personal protection, they got everything, but we're left, when the city's left out here with our 13 police officers to defend and try to take care of the business the way it needs to be handled. But the hand is tied because of certain areas in the state or certain different places in the federal government won't take care and support what we feel like that we need to do. But I think that we need to understand what our essential people, they call it essential workers, it's our paramedics and our firemen and our police and different ones that fits that category, whatever, what they're going through every day, to try, they're not holding it because they want to get shot at, they don't want those jobs because they want to get bottle stowed over the head or whatever, they, they do it because it's, it's in them to try to protect and serve, and I think we need to respect them for that. But I, that was my so-called introduction to this meeting to kind of set the stage for how this meeting's going to go. I don't normally, I like to get in, get out and go eat supper, you know, it's been a long hot day, thank goodness it hasn't rained. But as we go through this meeting, I want you to keep in mind that what I'm saying is when I went back talking about Facebook, that's where people express their opinions. And I'm going to get with Angie and I want her to get with Bob. I'm going to see if this meeting, these meetings cannot be put somehow or another on Facebook and that way everybody will see the meeting and know what's going on in the city business because they don't read the paper and they don't watch the channel of the TV that, that the meeting's on. And they're not here tonight. We got my wife, we got Britton that's on the board, and we got these two people living in the same neighborhood he does, and these two live in the same neighborhood he does. Where's all these people that wants to talk that don't know what they're talking about? They don't come to the meeting to be involved. They don't volunteer to run on boards and be on boards to be part of the city, to be part of the correction, be part of fixing the problem. They won't be, they won't either, you, you're going to be for it or against it. I mean, I don't understand why we don't have more volunteers wanting to get involved and make this a more positive city. Instead of sitting at home, they probably don't type in right now on Facebook, bashing somebody that is serving, these guys here give up their town. And I know they didn't do it for the money. When they first come in, they done it probably to watch me, make sure I did what I'm supposed to do, but I'll put it all back on them. It's all on them, not on me. And I have no personal agenda. But I, I don't, you either need to be part of the solution or part of the problem. And I mean, to me, there's no, really no middle. And you need to be part of the solution or part of the problem. This is a community of about forty-seven, forty-eight hundred people. Forty-seven or forty-eight hundred. We've got eight in this room. We're just discussing city business. But yet we want to go and talk about something on the world wide web so everybody out there can see it and preach it and then they don't know what they're talking about. I have a problem with that. So I want to see, whatever it costs, if the council's okay with it, I don't know what Facebook costs, I don't have it, I don't want it, and I don't care nothing about it because I read the paper and I come to this meeting where I know what's going on. I watch the news enough to know what's going on worldwide and then can't tell whether it's true or they filling you up, you don't know. I mean, but I, I try to be involved in what I think that I need to be involved in. It's just like, you don't want to go to this church, they're this way, then these people this way. You don't know if you don't go to that church. You don't know what kind of words being preached down there, you don't know if you don't go. I mean, it's, it's, it's like that in anything. People wants to run their mouth and they don't know nothing about what they're running their mouth about, but they need to start putting their, their care of the city to action instead of barking and downgrading. How can there be so much hate in this country like they are and these people that's running around here tearing down these cities and tearing down these communities and getting away with, how can there be that much hate? If people don't understand and see what I see and try to understand that there's a higher power that, and understand why things, I just can't, I just can't get my mind around. But I wanted, I wanted to do this introduction to come, but that's what I want to do is I want to try to get this, I'm not knocking the, the channel, I'm glad they do it and I'm not knocking the paper, I'm glad they put it in the paper because some people still read the paper, some people still get it. But we don't have people trying to be part of the solution. We got more people that wants to create a problem instead of being part of the solution to cure the problem. So tell me you've done good by coming in when you did, you didn't have to listen to the first fifteen minutes of my speech.
Do you want to do it again?
I don't, I'm not through yet, but I don't want to go back and read one.
You guys record it?
And I know they don't. If you've watched that, you might catch it. But I, I would like to see if we can make that happen. I want it to be to where people knows what's going because they're not going to go out of their chair to find out. So I won't put it where it's right in front of them without moving their other chair. If y'all will help me support that, I think that's what we kind of need to try to look for, trying to get it to where more people is involved by us putting it on them to, where they got to see it to be involved, where they know what's going on in this council meeting, know what you're voting on, know what we're discussing on, know what we're spending our money on without having to come to me. And without having to try to get it out of somebody that don't know what they're talking about on Facebook. That being said, the first item on the agenda is a minutes approval in May 19th, 2020 council meeting. If nobody's got a question how those minutes is written, I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Second. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is appointment of election manager. We got election coming up this year and for best of my knowledge, it has not been pushed off, pushed back because of the virus that's going around. Todd, we're still on, on board, for as you know, for as legal standpoint, we're still going to have the election.
As far as I know.
Okay. I need to appoint an election manager. I can't, being that I'm going to run for this position again, I cannot appoint myself as election manager and I recommend condition to the council that appoint Angie the city clerk to be the election manager to oversee the, the poll workers and handling all the keeping things in order for as election goes. I need to ask for a motion to approve her unless anybody's got anybody else they'd rather put on to do it. Second. All in favor? Resolution number 1259 absentee, absentee election manager. We go through this every election cycle, this resolution. This is compensating the city clerk for duties as an absentee election manager. This would be considered kind of sort of what would be overtime because it'd be extra time that she has to spend to do it. It's probably not going to be, how many hours?
I don't know, there, we, we believe the absentees will be high this year just because of the COVID.
Yeah, I mean, they have to handle absentee ballots or whatever, we want, I, I, we need to pass this resolution to be able to compensate them for their extra time. I need to ask for a motion to approve that. Resolution 1259. You need me to read it if y'all don't have a copy of it? Okay. I don't see how it could probably be over 10 or 12 days myself, at the most.
I think the span's just like 21 days and it won't be every day. I mean, it could be, but most, more than likely it won't be.
Gordon, have me absentee ballots with you. Does anybody have any comment or if not, I need to ask for a motion to approve this resolution. Rusty, second. Chris, all in favor? Resolution 1260, election of poll workers. Everybody got a copy of that? These, whereas a regular municipality has, the election has been called to be held on the 25th day of August 2020 and a runoff election to be held if necessary on the 6th day of October 2020. And whereas section 11 dash 46 dash 27 Alabama Code of 1975 and regulations adopted pursuant to the provide in part the municipal government body not to let them 15 days before the holding of any municipal election appoint, form the municipality. Officers to hold the election as follows where electronic ballot counters are used. That's what we use, at least one inspector and three clerks. Everybody's familiar with how that works at the poll. We just got one place that we do it at, the community center for his election. And therefore, it was all by the city council of Winfield, Alabama, that the election officers for city election shall be as follow. If anybody's got any question or comment on these things that's on here, these people have already been, probably, most of these have already served before, I would assume. If anybody's got any question or comment that don't approve of any of these positions, just let me know after I go through them. The inspector will be Rebecca Terrell. Ballot clerk's pound brochure. And restoration and poll list workers will be Cheryl Anila, as I say it. And Laura Boswell, Sherry Corbett, Libby Estes, Irene Farah, Barbara Ivy, Debra Knight, and Glenda Miles, Hilda Smith, Rose Spann, and Quarterly Weeks. Alternates will be Libby Estes and Chuck Pritmore. So if anybody got any question or comments about these poll workers, if not, I need to ask to approve this resolution number 1260.
No, she's actually just going to be an alternate.
She's just going to be an alternate. She won't be on the top list.
I'll make the motion.
Chris, damn second. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is a dog kennel insert for the police department. Rusty said, I didn't even know we had a dog. Well, we've been talking with Brett and of course, these, our meetings not being able to be held in a public, we've been on TV or on FaceTime and whatever, and I've been here by myself or whatever and it's kind of, we haven't, but Brett's got an officer. I'll let him explain to you about the canine deal, why he's asking for an insert and let him bring you up to speed about the dog. We've been, just, well, you tell them, you get them, you start from the beginning with about the dog, Brett, tell them how.
When I first come in as chief, I, we, I had talked with a couple of council members about, they had come to me talking about the benefits of a dog, what, what, what I thought about a dog, I felt about a dog. I'm a dog lover, but as far as a canine, I don't know anything about it, I've never done it. I didn't know what the pricing was. There were some things that I needed to do when I came in, quite frankly, that, that they needed more priorities than anything about. As bad as I would have liked to have done it then, it just wasn't. I did however, talk to Lieutenant Gary Hammond, who was at one time a canine officer of the city of Winfield. And he got me some numbers together early on and the numbers ranged from eighty-five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars, based on the discipline of the dog. What, what kind you got, what the bloodline is, those, those guys that really get into it. It's, there's a lot to it. I mean, there's, as, as far as you can pay a lot of money to get different calibers, I guess, at a different discipline. And at the time, that just was, that's a lot of money. A lot of money that we really didn't have at that particular time and we don't now. However, Justin Tottingham had come to me a couple of months ago and told me that he had a friend, which is the chief of Southern, Richard Daniels, and he works dogs, that's, that's what he does. And he told him, he said, he, he said, he helps him on the side, he said he can get us a dog and will cost us a thing, he'll train. And I said, don't, what I want to hear is don't cost us a thing, let's talk more about that. And, and he said, it's, it's free, it doesn't cost us a thing. And I said, well, I, I like that, but let's, let you get the dog and let's see, see what happens. He gets the dog and he actually pays, instead of getting the dog that they had discussed, he pays fifteen hundred dollars out of pocket and, and gets a Belgian Malinois. I saw her, she's a, she's thirty dollars, starts training. He sent me videos through the, the, the training process. She's about two months from being drug dealer, from being certified. The certification, to my understanding, is a hundred and fifty dollars, based on how many disciplines. Hers is, is drug detection and tracking. I didn't want a aggressive dog, I didn't want a bite dog. We have a lot of calls come into the police department for, you know what we do at the school as far as the towns that they call us. But we have a lot of folks that call in to say, I let so-and-so borrow my car, I, they've had my car, I've repossessed my car, I've got my car back, my son had my car, my aunt had my car, whatever, and, and they had a drug problem and we need a dog to search it. And I've had to send them to the county or send them to Hamilton. That's who, they've been very, very good to us over my four years here as chief, to come down and help us to search the schools and things of that nature. And I've always called them, gave the number up there so that they can get that done. So it's, it's a, it is a huge PR tool, number one, but it's also a huge drug tool to be able to use. And the mayor said, or said, Rusty said, we didn't, we didn't know we had a dog, technically, we don't have a dog, yeah. But he is, Justin has said that he will be glad to be the canine handler. He's done it, he's been doing it, that's what he does on his side time. He's paid fifteen hundred dollars, he's going to continue to work this dog whether we use it for walking. From my understanding, their competition is, especially, that they can do this. So I would like to use, it's, we're looking at, right now, an insert to put the dog in to get it ready to be our dog, per se, a police dog. She's 10 months old and like I said, she's roughly got two more months to go before she's, before she's ready. But the, the insert that goes in the car is a 60/40 transport insert, which means sixty percent for the, for the dog, forty percent for the, the transporter subject that may be under arrest. They are separate, they sit side by side, there's a door that keeps them apart. And the price on that insert, if y'all so see fit to do that, is twenty-six ninety-nine ninety-five. That's a mid-grade insert. And you guys may say you don't want a dog and then that's, that's a good thing. It's just, it's a huge tool for us and I, I don't mean it to sound like I, but I, if I can get something good for a very low price, I'm all about that.
It's huge, yeah.
For the police chief, a soldier, and I mean, his, when I was working down there some, and he is real good with dogs. He comes, he was at Plum High Seaport, I mean, recently, he worked in Plum High Seaport somewhere with him.
That's correct.
But I mean, his dogs, he just, and I, my personal opinion, I think, mean, were bad.
Yeah, I'm going with that. He's done, he's done a, he's done a lot and like, well, Justin helps him do it because Justin enjoys.
So you're talking about a tracking dog, you're talking about like a little kid or a older person got out here and got lost in the woods, like in Yipptown, you could say that the doctor didn't go hay.
Oh.
If Justin's going to house the dog, right?
This one?
That's what I was thinking.
I have still got to, in the event that you guys want or okay with it, I have put together an SOP that I'll send to Todd and let him review. There's still some things that I've got to do as far as Hamilton is concerned, but this is the first step. This is just seeing if you guys actually want to put it to work for the department.
This, what about, uh, you know, we, when we, we, before, when we had, when we had a, a dog, Brett, I hadn't talked to you about this, but for his, uh, uh, traffic, train, the next train's a car, uh, upkeep and the, uh, time, you know, when we, we had a comp time issue before, have we, have you discussed that with, uh, the, 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 the one that's gonna be handling the dog for is the feeding and, uh, time for, you know, there's guidelines for that?
I think it's four hours of pay period, um, training time and whatever, and then, uh, we would be responsible for food and, and vet bills.
If you, uh, would you, would he, this officer that's with this dog, he'll, he'll be a, he's a full-time officer on day or night shift?
He's on night shift.
On night shift now? If you needed him to, what's, if you had to have him on day shift for his, uh, overtime or time that you would need him, can you kind of elaborate a little bit on how you're going to use him if you have to use him during the times that he's not on?
Like serving the school or something? Like serving, doing the school or something like that?
Yeah.
I can, I can do it however you guys want to do it. I mean, I can, uh, I can swap him a day. I've got, I've got three on nights, I've got a supervisor and two officers. The guys do real good about whatever I need them to do, um, about working on their time. And, and, you know, overtime is always an issue that we look at for any department. And especially ours, because, um, you've got warrants and you've got certain things that you have to come out and do. But I, I told the mayor, uh, this week, the clerk's office has, has, uh, you know, there's, there's certain things. I, I talked to Todd this weekend, I'm kind of a silver lining guy, try to like, to find the positive in every nickel. And there's been some things that's come out of this COVID, and there's been a lot of bad, so the clerk's office is using Zoom, to be able to swear to warrant. So, um, that saves our officers from having to go wear an entire one VHS plus time coming in to go swear to a warrant. They can swear from the house. They call the clerk's office, um, on the warrant board, they're going there, click the, the tab, it shows that they're needing a face-to-face meeting, and they call the clerk, tell them that they're wanting to swear to a warrant. They meet with them right there, they go over it on the computer, hold on. If you ever catch my boot, you swear to it right there.
That's a neat.
For me, as a manager, that's a, that's a huge thing, uh, because that's time and wearing a terrible VHS, we cut down. But, uh, if it was a call-out situation, where we had somebody, um, that might be a little bit different. But if it's something that we can schedule ahead, we can most certainly work it out.
The only time that you're showing overtime or having overtime now is, is like an event like Mule Day? Or if we've, uh, football or basketball or anything of that nature? Your, your, your overtime is pretty much at a standstill, no overtime right now?
Yes, sir.
By having the three on each shift that is happening, the three on the night shift?
Absolutely.
Having a supervisor. So, so needless to say, probably, yes, times have changed from what it was the last time we had the dog, when we had a dog, when the city had a dog.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Chief, who is going to own the dog?
He will.
Be his dog?
Yes, sir.
To just work for us?
Yes, sir.
Will it work for other people? Will it be exclusively a Winfield officer, or will it be a?
Winfield, yes, sir.
Okay, it won't work for any other communities?
No, sir.
Okay. So any of the, any of the care, any of the care he gives, the dog will live with him?
Correct.
And any of the care he gives for that dog off time will be cared for by city of Winfield police officer?
Yes, sir.
That's the same as it is the city owned it too, and it could stay with that officer anyway.
Well, I think the way it was, uh, mayor, I, I, you guys may have, I think he had to, we purchased it when Gary had it, and then he had to buy it at a, at a prorated price based on years of service and, uh,
They actually, actually got donations, we actually got donations to buy it.
Yeah, that's, that's what it was, you're right, you're absolutely right. But I, I think, I think, I, I, I don't remember how that, that played out, but I, I know with this, we have no, which he told me when he bought the dog, he said, if I, if you need me to sign a contract, I'll sign a contract, say I'll do whatever, stay here. And I said, I mean, I, I trust him, I, you know, I, but he was, it's never been done like this that I know of, that, that somebody goes out and buys a dog, but he's that, um, he's that passionate about what he's doing, and it's, uh, it fills a plug for me.
That's why I was asking that question, Mayor, because I'm, I'm not sure, given that ownership situation, whether that dog will be an employee of the city of Winfield or whether he'll be a contractor. Whether it be just, the dog will be treated, I mean, he'll be an officer, sworn force officer, but I'm just wondering if he's gonna be an employee or, or contractor. The dog gets sale. And, and that, that is how we, that can determine how we have to deal with it for a wage and hour issue, for him taking care of the dog away from, and we just want to make sure that we're.
Yes, sir. I completely.
We, everybody agrees on that and knows going in what we're talking about.
And I told him that, as soon as we, if the city, uh, says that they want to go ahead. I've already sat him down prior to him, before he ever went and got the dog and, and, and threw this idea at me. I said, there's certain things that you need to understand that I'm going to expect. Uh, because I, I don't feel like anybody can do the job that you said if you don't set an expectation or standard for them to meet. And, uh, so I told him that if the city decides to go forward with this, after a night, there'll be another set down, uh, that'll be done, hired you guys, if you want.
And at the time, Chief, I mean, I, I think Randy remembers this too, at the time, the issue wasn't with the officer. The issue was we had an overtime audit.
Correct.
Okay, federal wage and hour folks, we got Jim Gott to come in and do that overtime audit, wasn't with the officer. The officer was just taking care of the dog and, and, and we'd, in fact, when we got the dog, we gave the officer extra money in his pay to care for the dog. But you have to consider, so the officer got raised to care for the dog, but you gotta consider some of that off-time work with the dog overtime. So, and like I said, it wasn't the officer making that pitch to us, saying you owe me this, it was the overtime audit that led to that. And we weren't aware of that, and it created the issue that we had to deal with, so we need to make sure we understand that going in.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that that's all clear before we, before we do.
And I think that, what you're talking about is the four hours per pay period.
Yes, sir.
You've got to, that, that's a minimum, if, if the dog's never called out, nothing ever happens, just for his, having the dog live with him.
That's correct.
He's in, it's an additional four hours a week in his.
Yes, sir.
Check.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then anything extra and above that is extra, but that's the minimum we have to make.
And, and he knows that as far as any, uh, acceleration in pay, that's not, that's not a, it's just, we're strictly going by the, um, whatever the standard is, if, if you have to do. He's just, Justin's a good guy, he's been a good officer for me.
I just want, I just want to make sure that that, that, if we do this, I just, I'm just wanting to make sure that that dog is a, even though it's Justin's dog and, and we didn't purchase it, is it, I want to make sure whatever we do, that that dog is a city of Winfield police officer. Because that, that's important.
Oh, yes, sir.
That's very important, that that dog be considered an officer.
As a contract.
For, for, that dog's protection and for Justin's protection, it's very important that that dog be an officer. And I want to make sure that we, whatever we do is, is.
I agree with that. Any comments or any questions for Brett? Uh, I mean, I, I feel like it'd be a, um, a win-win for the city for what he's going to do with the dog, um, for different reasons, I've seen, I've seen these dogs that they bring in, they do a tremendous job.
We've been blessed up to this point with Hamilton and the county. They've took care of us for the length of time I've been here and then before that, I mean, it's been lots of good times.
If y'all are all right with that, I need to ask for a motion to, um, do this police corps insert. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. All right, the next item on the agenda, part two, money. I'd, I'd like to have, I, I've always, which I'd have to, you know, do a lot of, a little more training and take a little more time to do some other things to, I, I would like to have a place at the lake. But I don't have a place at the lake because I don't have the money. I'm not going to ask for donations. When I, my daddy never left me a whole lot, but he left me an education. He taught me that if I ever wanted anything, that I had to work for it. He told me what he would pay for something, and if I wanted anything better or different, I had to pay the difference if it wasn't what it was. Now, some people get things handed to them and some people don't. Some people work for what they get, and some people expect it to be given to them. Some people's entitled, some's not. Some stands their business and some gets into others. But I was raised, and I feel like it was the best, best way to be raised, was in a godly home, going to church, and if you wanted anything, you had to work for it and not to expect it to be given to you. The reason I say that is, is a lot of people lose track, and I'm gonna go back to phase one of my introduction of city council meetings. What happens at a city council meeting? What is city business doing, what is these council members doing? What are they voting on, what are they spending the money on? Where's the money come from, how much money we got? Those things, a lot of times are not discussed in full in a, in a city council meeting. But when I was elected as mayor to be put in this position, it was my responsibility to see after the finances of this Win, of the city. That was, that's my duty, the duty, to look to day-to-day business and look over the finances of the city. And a lot of times, like I said before, on the outside looking in, it's one way. But when you get on the inside looking out, it's a different way, it's a whole different ballgame. I'd like to have a condominium at the beach, I don't have one because I can't afford it. I'm not gonna go and try to, you know, I work every, I don't know if people knows me, a lot of people don't, that know me and they don't like me because they don't know me. They don't like me because they don't know me. But that, that's their problem, not mine. I don't have the problem, they got one if they got a problem with not liking me. But I was taught to work for what I get. I mean, that's the only way I know how to do it, and I am a workaholic, and I love working, and I, and I love a man that will work. And I love to see young, I love to see young people, it just makes my day to see a young man that's come straight out of school and has got a job and trying to support himself and make himself go through college. But I'm not too fond of people that want something handed to them and feel like they deserve it. I, I, I don't deserve, I don't deserve anything, is the way I feel about it, I don't deserve it, I don't. And I mean, for people to think that I've got a personal agenda and want to dang do things the way I, that, that I, that me, that's gonna profit me or be in my way, that, that's so far from the truth that they hit the tree on a limb on the way down, every one of them. The reason I put money on here is sometime back, I asked the council, I think it was the last, well, it's probably been two paving projects before. I asked the council to go through the list of the streets. I, I, I think, my memory's getting worse every day, but I thought that I gave everybody a list of the streets, which I've got a list that I keep. And I had checked the streets and different things that had been paved and had been done, I had checked that. And the council knows that we have talked about this, and I asked y'all to go through and maybe categorize which ones would be worse, that needed more attention sooner. But there's one thing that we cannot control and we will never be able to control in, in this world, is mother nature. A lot of times, we, we budget this, or we may budget that, to do this or that, mother nature comes in and says, no, you're not gonna do it because you're gonna have to do this because this is what I've done. I mean, it, it's, you know, it just, I have a problem tolerating ignorance. Um, excuse me, I mean, I just, I do, but the, the, the issue with any city, the issue with any country, the issue with anybody, is always comes back to money. Because, and I go back to people not wanting to give their time to serve on a board that don't pay. Some people want to serve on a board that won't pay a dime, instead of working, serve on a board that makes decisions about money, that pays a little bit. And I mean, I, I don't understand that, because it's a different type position, I guess. But the people not wanting to give their time to be involved and be part of the community. We've got people in this community that, that give of their time and don't ask for nothing in return to make this a better city. And the people, I cannot stand negativity. Negativity is, people don't understand, when you get in this position, you try to recruit jobs and recruit companies to come here and different things, they read that paper that people don't read, they look at what, they, they, they see these council members arguing back and forth with the mayor. They see what's going on in these cities, they see that they can't get along, they see that they have issues of, of making decisions in the right way. So, negative? How are we ever gonna be what we need to be in the city of Winfield being negative? I, I have, I, I, I just keep going back to that, I can't stand negativity. And, and, and to be in this position as a chief, I don't, I guess you'd call it chief financial officer, I don't know what you would call it, but it's called mayor. I didn't run for mayor to be mayor, I came to see if I could make a difference. I've been in this town for thirty-five years and I'm doing what my daddy taught me to do, told me to work, I wanted to have anything, and by that, I work, to where I could have something, I've not had nothing give to me. These streets, have y'all went through that list and picked out which streets are worse? You know which ones needs to be addressed before the others? There again, I would, I would, have y'all, y'all remember the council meetings, or do y'all have to read the paper to know what's going on inside a council meeting?
I remember the council meeting.
Do we, does anybody not know, I mean, that's on this list right here, these lists is right here. Robbed not here, but Posey Lane got washed out down there. Regal Street right here that goes into Shadowwood, that's, that, that's got all those people that lives in those apartments, the house on the top and the three houses going in there. That's one way in and one way out. That house that sits right there's been flooded every time that comes these big rains. Now, we've had, we've had more rains and more water than we've ever experienced in our life. But I need, I need to say that I don't think it's gonna get any better, I think it's gonna continue to get worse because of what I'm taught when I'm grown up. Now, that being said, we've got roads that's got potholes, and we've got roads that's got, we've got roads that's got washed out cupboards, we've got high and low places in it. The park, been having to do some work down at the park. We have applied for a grant that y'all know about, and I'm sure you know that I applied for a grant, and there's different ways that you've got to use, the different things that you've got to do to be able to receive a grant. But I, I hate to bore everybody with all this, especially when I don't have but seven people in the room. Because nobody's gonna read the paper to know what I'm talking about. But Sophie, if you will, as I go back, let's get it on Facebook and then everybody in the country can see what we're talking about. I'm not preaching to y'all, I'm just upset about people not wanting to get involved and running their mouth, saying that this needs to be done and that needs to be done, and reckon this could be, without knowing. It goes back down to the bottom lines, money, money. Does everybody in this room understand how much money the city gets every month? No, because it's not put out there and putting, flashing letters on the sign, the city got this much every month. It's not out there like that. The ci, there's a ten percent sales tax in this city. Four goes to the state, one goes to the county, four goes to the city, and one goes to the hospital. And one, out of our four, the city's four, we got a city school system. And believe you me, I'm glad we've got the school we've got, because we've got one heck of a school system. But with, without people in this community to go to that school, it's not really that great if we don't have it, our kids is this and our kids is that. Now, that four percent, Tommy, do you know how much the school gets? No. One point eight. One point eight five. Yeah, one point eight five out of four. One point eight five out of four. Do you know where the property tax money goes that the city collects? Where? School gets one hundred percent of it. Now, but, but, I want the paper and I want the people to understand this list and I'm not putting down the school. Because I, I think that's the great thing, the way this is set up. There's probably two hundred and fifty plus people works at that school. Those are jobs and jobs is what we need. We need those people living in this. We need those people making a good salary. It's just like the hospital. People say, we don't need a hospital. Yeah, we need a hospital because we won't worry about getting jobs in here. We want jobs in here. We want to do this. We want to do that. We gotta get jobs. There's nearly two hundred and eighty people works at the hospital. We got to support that hospital because it's part of this community. There's no industry gonna come here without a hospital. And the first thing the CEOs and places does that people come to look at these companies comes in here, what kind of hospital, how close is the hospital, what kind of school system we got, they go and they go turn the school. Then they will go to subdivisions, see the open houses, see what houses we can live in. Then they will know what's wrong with the roads. Believe you me, and when I say it, I mean it. And, and I think this council does, they've been very good to work with me. That every road in the city of Winfield is on the list. Every road is on the list to be paved, every one of them. But we cannot do it. My job as a city mayor is to oversee the finances of this city. I'm going on my eighth year, this, this November will be my eighth year that I've been in this position. And we have survived eight years of them watching over me, so to speak. I know what money we got and I know what money comes in and I know what we can spend and I know what we can't. I know it. I've been self-employed for thirty-something years. I'll pat myself on the back, but I know money. I know how, what comes in and what goes out. I don't anticipate that this is gonna come in or anticipate this. What we got's what we got. Because you don't, not guaranteed what you're gonna get tomorrow. We're not guaranteed it. People don't keep up. People don't know because people don't get involved. They don't understand. I've applied three years in a row for a grant to do, hold the whole quarter states and I thought the third year was gonna be a charm. They told me it would be. Me and you discussed this the other day, Mr., uh, uh, when you come to the shop. The third year I got kicked out because we wasn't low to moderate income. There wasn't enough low to moderate income to do quarter states. And that's the only place that would qualify for that CDBG grant. The only place that could possibly qualify to get that half a million dollars to do that whole subdivision. That was the only place in Winfield. And that's why I tried to put that money there to do that. We'd had a seventy-five, eighty thousand dollar mature to get them to do that job. Right over here, I've been back and forth, whether to do it, whether or not to do it, whether to do it, whether or not to do it. I have, I have spoke, I've at least reached out to these council for ethics reasons. A lot of times they don't wanna reply. I can understand that. I can understand that. But people needs to understand the frustration is you run your family and you won't go out and do this or that. Only person you may have to consult is your wife or your husband. I gotta consult these guys and I gotta consult him if it's a legal issue. I can't just, okay, this is what we're gonna do. I can't do that. I wished I could because I promised you we would get a whole lot more. I'm not knocking them. But they, they know these loopholes we gotta go through, these t, t's we gotta cross, i's we gotta dock, they know that. But just because something needs to be done and it's not being done is not because there's not nobody trying to get it done. And people don't read the paper and they don't see what we're discussing up here, so they don't know. Money. Like I said, I'd like to have, I've got a lot of things and it's by the grace of God, I got what I got and I'm able to work to get it. But I, the city. We, we, when we passed alcohol tax, I mean, I'm, I'm going back to Facebook because that seems to be the way to get a hold of people if you wanna get a hold of them. If you want to turn up the fire and the volume of water, just go on Facebook and hit them. I don't do Facebook, but people tells me what's going on in Facebook. And we need to get this council meeting on Facebook tomorrow. To where people will understand what's going on in the city and where the money comes from. We got a road down here. When I say I'm back and forth with this grant, I'm applying for CDBG grant. And, and I, and I have in, in the last five years, I think it is. I don't like quoting and saying things because to go back where he lied about that. I'm estimating and I'm guessing. I've secured four CDBG grants. I'm almost positive in the last five years. I've secured four CDBG grant. People wants mouth off and say something about the city spending three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a side tail building over here. It sits on twenty acres, but they want somewhere for their kids to work when they get out of school. They want their jobs to be here. If we don't spend money to try to have it to where we can get industry in here and do things, we're not gonna get industry in here and do things. It's just not gonna happen. If we wanna pave the streets in this town, if we don't get more tax revenue coming in, I'm gonna be like John Cooper was with the state of Alabama, Aldot Director. When he come in, he said, we go, I go to those meetings that don't pay me a dime to go to those meetings, but I go. So I'll be in the know where I won't be sitting saying, well, I hadn't heard it. I didn't know it. He comes in, he has a list as big as this whole wall right here with X's by him. He says, I'm not gonna stand here and promise you that we're gonna do something and when I know that we're not and when we don't have the money to do it. And that's exactly what he took. He took our west bypass out over here, the east bypass, he took those bypasses out. It'd been in the system for twenty years, I think it has. Todd probably knows, he might have helped write it up. He took it out. He says, we don't have the money to do it. Now, we've tried to get grants. I've tried to work with the railroad. I've tried to work with different people to try to help us get that bypass finished. But we're, that's another, another story for another day. The reason I've been back and forth with this grant issue over here, it's almost a given that I'm gonna get it. But it's low to moderate income that has to be qualified for that CDBG grant. When you get a CDBG grant, if it's about for an industry, they say, well, they do this for Tiffin, you do this for whoever. It's because it's jobs, there's jobs involved. It's just like when we built the road up here that's on one of our CDBG grant jobs going into Huddle House. I don't think people realize the revenue that comes in from business. Revenue from businesses is how we pave streets. It's how we have a better school system. It's how we have athletic facilities at the school for our kids. It's been said that the city don't care about our kids. That's a lie. I mean, my gosh, go to a city council meeting if you don't know, get somewhere where you'll know before you get out there and act foolish and not say, say things about something you don't know. Okay, yeah, we don't care about our kids. We just spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, did we not, for lighting up here at the ballpark to be safer because the pole's about to fall? Three hundred? Do we have to remind people? Yeah, because they wasn't at the council meeting to see what we did. I mean, I just get frustrated. I can't tolerate ignorance. I can't. And I was that way before I got here to see what it is in here looking out. It's different. They need to come here to see. And I've asked this council, like I said, they've done, they have worked with me very well when I try to make a recommendation, they understand. People talking about buying a building and give it to somebody. Do you know what eighty jobs worth in this hospital? Do you, do you know? Do you, does anybody have a clue what a thirteen million dollar payroll does to this city? From a business. Times it by seven. People say we don't need to pass a one cent tax to support a hospital. It's a thirteen million dollar a year payroll. Times it by seven. That's about what impact it has on your community. We do, we do incentive, incentives to get these little Caesars, Sonic. Huddle House. I mean, we do this to get people, get these people interested, to give them a reason to come here. I mean, this, this, this town is forty-eight hundred people with four or five red lights. They compare our population to other places that don't do what we do, how we do. And I think that's totally wrong because this city does a whole lot more than what they could ever imagine a forty-eight hundred population city would do. And, and things was, things would do a whole lot better than what they thought they would do. But, because they just don't know the city. But I, I can go through the list. I can sit here all night long to talk about the grants that we've applied for. We, uh, the reason I've been back and forth with that's because we're gonna have to have, we got to have a seventy-five thousand dollar, probably close to seventy-five thousand dollars to match that grant. When I get that grant, I got to pay that seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, when you buy a car at home, you gotta pay that car payment. And if you don't think you've got the income to pay that car payment, you probably might not buy that car. Or you may not buy that lake house or buy that condo down at Florida because you don't know that you're gonna pay for it because you're not guaranteed that you're gonna have the money. We have to manage on two point one five percent on this town to do what we do. To play our police department and play our fire department and play the streety street guys that does a heck of a job keeping this town clean. We cannot just go do something because we feel like it needs to be done. We have to make sure. And we get, and the forest, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we borrowed the money for to buy that business. We done, I done turned down two manufacturing people that would have hired between sixty and eighty people because I didn't have nowhere to put them. You know how hard it is to try to get jobs here and then you have to turn them away because you don't have nowhere to put them. It's aggravating. It's not good. It's, it's a pain. And for the, for the record, I got it for two seventy-five. I, well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that and it wasn't because I sit on my butt on FaceTime. FaceTime and Facebook, both of them. It, it's because I worked hard with them people to try to get them to understand where we was at and what we needed to do. Fortunately, we've got the deed to that property and I am very pleased that we got that. That's a two and a half million dollar building sitting over there with twenty acres of land that's next to the railroad. I mean, it don't take me, it don't take a rocket scientist to figure it out. I mean, I've, I've seen some sixteen-year-old people that can see that, see the light at the end of tunnel quirk and some people that's seventy and eighty. But, but two point one five percent out of four cents. Our payroll runs between forty-five and fifty-five thousand dollars every two weeks. We've got a CDBG grant that I'm working on now that should have done, been done last year. But we got the grant, it's been vetted out this week, it's four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars that we were granted to build, finish, take that road. That goes into our industrial park up here on this hundred acre site that goes into the, by the way, that we sit on, sit on that industrial site for about fifteen, ten to fifteen years. Ten, probably ten or twelve years. I guess it's ten or twelve years. I don't wanna speak out of turn. I don't wanna say that there's something that's not true. I don't wanna toot my own horn, but I'm wanting people to know the facts. We got, we've got an industry up there. People says, I don't think that you need to buy land and give it to somebody else. You need to do the math. You need to do your homework. You need to pay attention to what a job, one job worked in a city. Where those people live, go to church, go to school, go to our Walmart, buy our gas, buy our groceries in that town. What that in, what that payroll is worth to that one person in that town. We got a grant to go on and extend that road on fast around past Tiffin up to the, to the next section line. And the cul-de-sac coming back there is four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Okay. When we start, that, that project got lit, they, they, their, their time, they got one hundred and eighty, ninety? Got ninety days to finish it. That started today. If they don't finish it in ninety days, it's gonna cost them like it did on the bridges over in Birmingham. I know everybody's seen that, knows about that. Because it was on Fox News or CNN or wherever it was at, or Birmingham, or thirty-two or thirty-three. We seen that. They get penalized if it's not done. Well, when they turn in their first pay request, seventy-five hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna come right in here and she's gonna write them a check. Do we have the money to cover it? No. We don't have money to cover it. Can you, can you tell me right off the cuff, or would you have to think if I ask you how much money's in the general fund right now? Mike, can you tell me how much money's in the general fund right now? Eighty thousand. We got a two-week, every two-week payroll of nearly fifty. We, we got a garbage account where we collect the garbage. We move that money out of that account into the general fund to make payroll. We got an alcohol account. We move that money out of the alcohol account, move it in the general fund to make payroll, to make, to pay the payables, accounts payables. We get this bill comes in here for this mature on this grant that we got for four hundred and ninety-three dollars, which our part's not, but seventy-five thousand. But we gotta pay that first draw of a hundred thousand. It's gonna take us thirty days to get our money back from the state. Okay, so we're sitting there rocking all, in the red, or we're gonna have to borrow the money or take it off of a CD or something to cover that hundred thousand. Because we don't have money sitting in general fund. That money runs through that general fund faster than it does in my checking account. And that's very fair. I mean, it's just, it goes in and right out, goes in and right out, in and right out, constantly. We're constantly zero or negative. We're trying to keep getting over, I mean, it's just that way. That's how close we are on our expenses. I mean, that's how close that we are. There's no big general fund sitting out there. There never has been no big general fund sitting out there for the city of Winfield. Now, I've put together a few things and had her look up a few things. Uh, give me that, where's that list on my, what we've got in the CDs? You got it? Would I leave it in there, Mike? Well, I, I'm gonna estimate it. I got the correct number, but I'm gonna estimate it. We're probably, we've got one for around a hundred and sixty and one for around two hundred and fifty. And that's for a city that's been here since the eighteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. That's what we got in, in CDs and in savings. Do we wanna lay officers off? No. Do we wanna lay firemen off? No. Do we wanna lay street workers off? No, we don't. But do we wanna keep staying above water? Yes, we do. Has this pandemic affected us? Of course it has. The park lost a ton of money because they didn't have to, they didn't have page, they didn't have their miss, they didn't have their pageants. They didn't, I think you're on the park board. I mean, you know what kinda money's been lost at the park. We have to deal with stuff like that that comes along constantly. But I say all that to say this. We've paid Highland, in, in, when we, when we, we have paved more roads in the last seven years than has ever been paved in the history of Winfield, paved. They some that's chipped and sealed. A lot of them's chipped and sealed. And mo, all of them is chipped and sealed unless they've just been paved in the last seven years. They're all chipped and sealed. Everybody know what chipped and sealed is? It's where you got the gravel, you lay the tar down and put rock back on it. That's not asphalt. We have put down more asphalt in the last seven years than has ever been in the history of Winfield. I make it, I, I have to stay on Mike. He does our, he, he works up our budget for us. I don't usually, I mean, I, I don't have to go by budget. I mean, because I, I know in my mind what's coming in. I know what's going out. I see the, I, I know what our payrolls are. I mean, once you learn it, you kinda get an idea. It's like at your home, you get a check each week for a thousand, eight hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. You know that's coming every week. You kinda know how to budget it. Well, that's the same way I am. When we passed, when the alcohol tax passed, I told them I didn't want to include that money in the general fund. I wanted to use it a hundred percent for paving, for asphalt. I, I, I told them that. That's what I wanted to do. Well, it got put in the budget, the money got put in the budget because it's the thing to do to make it, you know. But when we get our audit, every year that we've got our audit, our capital gain, our, our gain, we have got an A-plus or A-minus, win A's rating every year with our credit. With what the city's done with the money that they get. And the amount of money that this city gets through taxes and different things, luckily we get a, we get an Andy check, we call it from the gas district because the city owns part of the gas district. We get a check rebate, a check comes back from Alabama Power. Those things, those things allow us to actually do a little bit better for us getting things done. But every year. Which I had them to try to do a real quick search to put together what we've done for me for this council meeting because I knew I was gonna have this discussion. I like my numbers to be right. And I told them that I felt like it was in the neighbor, neighborhood of one point two or one point four million that we have spent on projects, paving projects that are include, or included paving. We've done Highland Road, we've done Freedom Street, we've done Foothill, we've done all of Quail Run, we've done. We've done Highland Road, we've done Freedom Street, we've done Foothill, we've done all of Quail Run, we've done all of Allen Trace, we've done Evergreen, we've done, uh, I could go on, we've done nearly ninety percent, I'd say it's close to ninety percent, eighty percent of Meadowwood. We've spent, we have spent money that Mike said we didn't have to spend. But we managed, we did it. And it's, it, it, it's my job to see to it that the city can pay its bills and not get behind and not get to where we file bankruptcy. And let me throw something else out there, Winfield City does not own the waterworks. The Water Department is a separate entity to the city. So tell your friends and all their kids, well, they'll go home and take a note to them and say, the city don't own Winfield Waterworks. Because it don't. People wants to gripe about that part, that's not, that, I sit on that board and they appoint the board members just like they do up here at the school, they appoint board members to the school, we appoint board members to the park, that, that mayor sits on that board. But the city don't own the Water Department. It says Winfield Water, we had a Winfield tow-in one time, but the city didn't own it. We have Winfield Monument, but the city don't own it. I just wanted to throw that in there because that seems to be an issue too that goes around and people don't know, and they wanna say this or that, and they don't know nothing about. Money, it's gonna take money to pave these roads. And when I'm going back to what I was saying while I've held out on that grant to go into Shadowwood, it's gonna take seventy-five, probably, it's gonna be, the grant is gonna be close to half a million dollars. It's gonna take seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to match that grant. I've reached out to them, I ca, I called contractors in, a couple of contractors come and give me a price on fixing it and the city paid for it outright, where I could use that grant, what? Somewhere else. Because you ain't allowed so many, but so many CDBG grants. This road going in down here, we call Midway Drive, comes off the red light right down here, not the main one, but the next one going into the, uh, goes down to King Cutter and Continental, where those jobs are, those trucks goes down through there. Everybody, if anybody's not familiar with, the water turns and goes under Midway Drive, right there at the Alabama Power substation. That road's sinking. If you out and walk and get snaked bit, go down in underneath, go down in the creek, look in the pipe, you can see where it's collapsed, there's about three or four foot of it hanging down. Now, when I asked these guys, we didn't know, we didn't have this issue when I asked them to check what roads they felt like need to be done, what roads need to be paved. We didn't have that issue. But we got that issue now. And we really, we had an issue, but not as a bad of an issue when we started talking about when Regal Street, when it started doing what it did. Posey Lane, the cupboard gone. Over here, Berry Road, there's one cupboard, needs to be two. So I got estimates from a contractor to see if it wouldn't be better for the city to try to afford to hire a private contractor to come in and fix these places, fix these, fix these issues, and then take and use that grant somewhere where the city couldn't afford to fix it. I've been with Rob, I've talked with Rob a little bit, FEMA has got some money because of the flood issue, the flooding that we've had. And we have got to fi, we have got to file and fill out the paperwork of what it's gonna cost to fix certain areas to where we could try to get that FEMA money to help us in some, in some, in some tight places that we've got that's gone, that's created, because of the flooding, that has created problems. That road sinking down there is one of them, Posey Lane was one of them, Berry Road's one of them. Cherokee, on that end, we got a spring that comes up through the ground. Now, if anybody has any, in, 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 talking about doing things for the kids, the city don't care nothing about the kids. That just, that just drives me crazy for somebody to even make that remark. Yes, I, I would, I, I, I would love for us to have a splash pad and a water park. But the city would, the city, there's, some things there's just not grants for. There's, there's grants a lot of times to help in the park in different situations. But you've also gotta take, those, those particular things are not made to make money. They're made to provide a, a service, not, not, not like the fire department provides a service, but it's to provide something for the kids and for the citizens where they, you know, to kinda offset, to, to have them have, have them, where they have something to do, the park's designed that way. Not everybody's a baseball player, not everybody's a softball player, not about everybody's a BAM member, not everybody's a football player, not everybody's a basketball player. We got some other people that wanna do other things. And I think there needs to be something for everybody. But we need more entrepreneurs in this town that's willing to put theirself to work and use their money to try to make a difference in a town. And we've got a lot of people, a lot of places that donates, makes from the different, that, 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 that gives donations to the cities for different things. We've got a lot of people that puts their hard-earned time and money into that to make those things better. And I, I applaud them very much for it, because the city, it, 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 it helps the city tremendously what these people do. But without, I mean, we got a pandemic going on, that's still going on, we don't know how it's gonna go, this, it's up in the air about whether what time school's gonna start, when the school's gonna do this. Everything's having to change. And for us to be selfish and want to, want what we want, and then want it right now, it just can't be that way when there's no money. This, and, 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 and I think that this town has done extremely well, extremely well with the city school system and keeping it like they've got it, we've got the, one of the best in the country, ranked high in the state. I think it's done really well, and I, our hospital will be the same way. And, and, and the people in this community to support one another and try to help things, help support it and make it happen. But this whole list of streets down here, they're on the list, and that's not all of them. And potholes, we can't rob, I signed a PO, I sign a PO about every other week for plant mix, putting in potholes. He may not have got to yours yet or got to where it's at. I've talked with the county commissioner, Tim Estes, and a lot of this area's not in his district. But Tim's been very good to talk and try to help on his behalf, on his side of his public servant place to come in and try to help us in different areas, he helped us up here on Cherokee. Uh, I've talked with him about chipping seal on one particular road over here that's, that's nothing but gravel pretty much now. And I mean, I like to ask the question, if you got a road that's a quarter mile long, there's not but two people live on it, and it's not but ten foot wide, is that road more important than Midway Drive that goes down to Continental and King Cutter and more petroleum and all those places, is that one, is that road more important? With those two houses on it that's ten foot wide, and that's all that's on it, the traffic that should be on it, that's really all the traffic should be on it for those two residents? Is it more important than Regal where those people ain't got but one way in or one way out, is, is that road more important? You gotta prioritize which roads is important and try to take this little bit of money that you got and use it wisely and try to get things done. And it bothers me the way that the, this council has done and spent money doing paving, and it just like it gets ignored because it wasn't my road, it wasn't my street. The reason I thought about you not using that grant is I could use that grant to do what? Tear down about twenty-five houses inside the city. It's gonna take money to do those projects, it's gonna take money to, 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 to take and hire somebody, a demolition crew to come in there and tear these houses down. We've got to be able to pay for it. Ms. Gloria Brown's been here numerous times, she comes in the shop numerous times. I drive a school bus for the city of Winfield, and I drive by that house two times a day during school. There's one house in Quarter Straits, I don't go to Meadowwood, there's two houses over there, they's, they's twenty-eight, let me correct, twenty, twenty-six and twenty-eight houses that I've got marked that needs to be gone, that needs to be demolished, gone. Twenty-six to twenty-eight. That grant over there could be used for that. I had to weigh out, is it worth, that grant could be, hopefully could be used for this project down here, I don't know that it can. But I have, I have been instructed by people that writes my grants that I need to use that grant up there. For whatever reason, they know, because of the money that comes from the federal level to state level, I need to use it right there, that's what I've been told. So somebody that's ahead of the game, that knows that's in the know, I got to listen to them, I'm gonna have to use that grant there. So I've got to try to just find out how I'm gonna fix this road down here that's going to, to those plants. I've gotta figure out where I'm gonna get the money to do it. And, and at the same time, you know what, we're gonna do some paving this year, and it won't be because it's election year, because I've been paving every year anyway. And it's not because it's election year, that's been stated, and that's the farthest from the truth that I've ever heard. If people would look and listen to things at council meeting, they'd see what's been voted on and passed to do. I mean, we pave projects, what we do up here, the other day when the school pitched in, the school done their part and done the, done the road around to the circle. I mean, do I wanna go to the school board and say, hey, I got a cousin that wants a teaching job, don't you give her a job? I'm not that, I can't do that, I don't have that, I don't have that pull to get somebody a job up there. So, somebody recommended somebody to come to a council meeting, to bring it before the council. I've laid it all out here, hopefully it gets put on Facebook, then everybody can see it, and it's on the dang news, it's on the TV station, it's in the paper. Why, we hadn't done what, done your road? Or we hadn't done this, and it's because of one thing, money. And I am not gonna break this city. And people were sure worried about it when it come, you know, they made, made remarks about spending this or spending that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, on my watch, this city's not gonna, not gonna go backwards. And if it means not paving a road or tearing a house down, that's what it means, that's exactly what it mean. Gloria's been up here humpteen thousand times, and Britton's been here and mentioned that house. We have formed an abatement board to bring it back up because it had got to where it wasn't used. We brought that board back in, we getting, we, we worked on ordinances to get ordinance in place to take and take care of those unwanted sites and the things that needs to be done. We got to make sure that things in order, and then we get a pandemic, and then we gotta meet by phone and can't meet in person. And it's hard to discuss issues about how we, you know, we have to, I have to think about how we're gonna pay for it. Now, that, that one particular, those, those two, two, two particular houses has been put out for bid to be destroyed. Now, if we don't get no bid, I can't bid, I do demolition, but I can't bid because of the ethics and the position I'm in, I can't bid. Now, the next thing we're gonna have to dang deal with is if we don't get no bids, and that very well could happen. I don't know that it will, but it very well could happen, that we won't get bids. That's another thing, another T that we gotta cross, another I that we gotta dot. I don't want them no more than anybody else wants them. So anybody else, I mean, I'm not throwing this at y'all because I know it's in y'all's neighborhood, and y'all the only ones that showed up for the council meeting. But it may be because you were told to be here. It may not be because you wasn't told to be here. But a lot of times people come because they were told they need to come to a council meeting. But that, trust me, trust me, trust me. And lots, it's hard for people to trust people, but I'm, I do what I say I'm gonna do. It may not be on the, it's just like, I don't like, I can't compare, I can't do that. You know, I, I always have to catch myself trying to compare myself to something, but if I tell you I'm gonna do it, I'm working to do it, and, and, and me telling you that I'm gonna do it, and then, and something, and then, and then it goes to, goes to somebody else, and they say, well, you need to come up here. I risked it all these streets, I don't think any of y'all's got, those streets right there is listed. I could've, but I didn't. I could've called every one of these people that was on these str, every one of these people that live on these streets, and I know most of them by heart, and I know most of them because they've contacted me about their street. I know them. But I don't tell them to come to a council meeting because I know the situation. I know we don't have the money to do anything about it, and I'm not gonna make promises that I can't keep. But I am gonna promise you one thing, I will make this promise, and I mean it, is I'm gonna do everything I can to make it happen. But I'm not gonna say I'm gonna go down there tomorrow, I'm gonna be there next week, or I'm gonna get robbed in it. And a lot of time, you know, reminding me, sending somebody to remind me, I promise you, Tammy can tell you, these, 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 the city issues rank high on every issue that I got, they rank it because there's forty something hundred people that's, that's, that's after me on different issues. Not everybody, but there's that many people in this city. And this council has to make the decision, and I have to tell them we can afford it or we can't afford it, afford it. But, money, I mean, it's all about money, I mean, that, I would've done, had a whole lot done, if I had, if I had, if I had an unlimited, and it, and it, and it bothers me a little bit, it bothers me a little bit that the federal government, I say bothers me, it bothers me a whole lot, that the federal government sends that money out there. Nothing's free, somebody's gotta pay for that somehow. Okay, if the, if the federal government says, okay, Winfield City, we're gonna send y'all two and a half million dollars because of this pandemic. Okay? Do we deserve that two and a half million dollars, or we gonna be able, would we, would we need to take that two and a half million dollars because the federal government's gonna try to give it out, because somebody's gonna have to pay for it, somebody's gonna have to, somehow another money's gotta get back to, somehow another's gotta get back. If they sent us two and a half million dollars, I think I could pave every street in the city, get close to it. I could dang near do it, and I think that, and if it was, if it was free, should we take it and do it? Or should we use that money to clear the city's debt? The debt that we, the debt that, few debts that we got, I mean, you have to weigh those things out, you know? The school sits on a reserve to, to back them for so many months of operation in case of something catastrophic happen. The city, the city don't. We don't have, we don't have six months of payroll put back. And I mean, we've, we, I, I think we've done a pretty dang good job. I think we've done really well, this council and the council before. I think that we have done extremely well with a little bit amount of money that we have, using that money in the right ways, doing what we've done to, to help this community be a better place to live in, and the roads be better to drive on. I think that we've done extremely well. And I feel like that we can continue to try to spend between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year, which that's what I've been told, Mike, that I wanted to budget, he cuts me down to a hundred. A lot of times I go over and, where you gonna get the money from, I say, let it come. You know, it, and, and it happens, I mean, we make it happen. But I've asked them, because these guys, because they're gonna be the ones to ultimately vote and say, okay, yeah, I agree to pave that street. I think that's what we need to do. These roads by both, both, these roads by each one of these guys' houses, they don't wanna vote on them because they live by it. And I understand that. We don't want fix, we don't wanna dare fix nothing close to where we live or work because it, we're doing it unethically, we shouldn't do that, even though it may be the worst one, got a creek running through the middle of it. We better not fix it because that's where we live. But I think that we've done extremely well, and I don't see where that anybody on this council, or anybody in this administration that's here has foolishly made decisions with a personal agenda. I don't see that, I don't see that has happened, I do not see it. And I think these guys is in it for the right reasons. And it, it, that being said, I want y'all to continue to look at the list because, you know where we at on Regal, I filed for a grant. You know where we at on Arrowhead, and, and another thing. I can't control mother nature, I cannot control what previous administrations, I cannot control what previous engineers has, how they've laid things out and what they've done. I've got an issue right here, my junked up business that I got down here that a lot of people complains about. I've got an issue down there because that creek that comes down through here that goes on to the railroad on the right side, it's sunk my ground. I've got three cupboards in there that I put in in nineteen ninety-eight that runs from one, runs from Mallard Road to Kirkwood. Well, they're all sinking. They're, I mean, I've lost several yards of concrete because of their sinking. I've got those issues, and I didn't ask the city for a dime when I put that in there. I, I'm not gonna ask the city for money. Because I know, being here now, I know what the city deals with for is having money. And the importance of making the right decisions, how to use that money and where to use it. I mean, I wouldn't dare ask the city to help me with my issue, but I've got, I've got that issue that I got to deal with. And I keep saying, well, maybe if I make it ten or fifteen more years, I don't have to worry about it, somebody else can worry about it. But I don't know if it's gonna make it that long with the rains that we keep having. Uh, we, we're, we're, we've doing, we've done really well, and these CDBG grants with these jobs, they have to guarantee forty jobs. If they're not, uh, most time with forty, I'm gonna say forty, but sometimes you get by with thirty, but most time it's forty jobs on these jobs that we do, like with Tiffin and different ones that we've done. A lot of times, they, those jobs have to be met in one year. If those jobs not met in one year, the city has to come back and pay the full If those jobs not met in one year, the city has to come back and pay the full amount of the bill. We've yet had to pay a full amount of the bill. And that gives me bonus points, or gives the city bonus points because we have applied for CDBG grants, and we've met the requirements to do those grants. We've, we've met them, and we don't have to go back and pay back where we, we knock on wood. We've had some other things step in place for whatever reason. God looking over for whatever reason, other things fell in place to help us meet the numbers. That's happened. But it, it, it gives us bonus points, so to speak, as to being able to apply for CDBG grants and get them in a timely fashion. These grants, a lot of times takes, when you gotta apply, by the time it's let, it takes sometimes six months to eight months a year to get it done, to get to this. We applied for this CDBG grant up here March of nineteen. Uh, no, we applied for it probably the latter part of eighteen, the first part of nineteen, but it's just now getting done, for whatever reason. That being said, I mean, I've done said that five hundred times, but I think maybe everybody if, can get the message and get it through that we care about your kids. We want things in this city, but we got to have income and sales tax dollars, sales tax dollars, what makes this boat float. Sales tax dollars come from traffic. We gotta get people through here. We gotta get people stopping here. We got to push for them to stop and eat in our restaurants and go to our Walmart, and, and we got to give them reason, we got to give them reasons to live here, to where they do that, to build this money to where we can spend it on different things and different streets. But I'm gonna ask the council if they will, that, you know, to kinda help me prioritize, and let's see if we can't continue our, we know that we've been paving, and we know that we've been paying for what we pay. Oh, Angie says, how, so and so's got a bill, how are we gonna pay it? But we've worked it out. I mean, we've always paid it. And, and I know what we can spend and what we can't spend, and I'm not gonna promise somebody that I'm gonna come pave that road, or I'm gonna go do this when I know good and dang well that I can't. But I will tell them that I'm making every effort to do it, and I think that's what I would like the council to do, and don't tell nobody to come up here and, and protest and say that they need this or that. Do what I say. Say what, I mean, say, because what's gonna happen is if they keep coming, I'm gonna say, well, you asking me here, you tell them what you're gonna do about it. You know, don't put them on me every time. I mean, I'm not gonna lie to them. I can't. Oh. We've put, we've put, like I said, on demolition, we've put two places out, that I'm sure does the council, any of the council members not know that what the, where I'm talking about, where we've put up, I've sent out for bids on the two, uh, projects for, uh, demolition. I think it's two projects. You gotta copy that and play. That's the letter sent. Okay. Quarter states and metal. All right. If, if, uh, if anybody don't have any questions on, I got, uh, letter V, Carter States and Jeff Jackson. Jeff, you wanna, uh, bring us up to speed, what you got?
Uh, yeah. First, let me just say that, uh, nobody on the council asked me to come up here tonight, okay? And, uh, I know that you and I talked the other day about the streets. We talked about the streets several years ago, I understand that. I don't think you can say that I have been harassing you a lot of you about the streets. Uh, I talked to you the other day. All I came up here for tonight was to say thank you for the progress that you're, y'all doing and making as far as removing that house out there. I, I do want to get that house moved, uh, down or something, whatever. That's all I came out here for. Uh, I don't read the paper, I don't take the paper, but I own Facebook. But I will subscribe to that damn paper tomorrow.
That's pretty good.
That's all I, that's, that's all I know. I'm, I'm responsible, I'm fortunate, I'm responsible for these people here, been here, because I, I reminded them that asking to come.
No, I mean, I, don't get me, don't get me wrong. Don't, uh, look, don't, don't get me wrong. This, I'm not, I wasn't preaching to y'all. I was preaching to. Well, if you, if you took, it's like it isn't. It's like, it's like if you're in church, and you think the preacher's preaching to you. It, you know, that, I'm just saying, but I wasn't preaching to y'all. I get frustrated with people, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'm, y'all know me, I, I do my job, I do my thing, and I go on. I don't get nobody's business, but people starts trying to get in the city's business. I don't care who tries to get in my business, but this is city business that they're talking about, wanting to do this or not doing this, and it's personal agendas, and that bothers me.
Well, I understand what you have said tonight because I have been, uh, self-employed for years, own business, uh, not here in, in town. Uh, but, uh, I, I know what you're talking about, and, you know, and I don't have any complaints about what you guys are doing. Apparently y'all doing a great job here in the city. Uh, having owned a business, you know that if you own a business, you put in more hours than any employee you got to. So, uh, I don't normally come to, haven't been coming to any of these meetings because I haven't had time, and.
That's understandable. I mean, that's the same way I was before I run for this position.
I, I appreciate what y'all are doing, and, uh, I am, yes, I'm ha, I'm happy to know that our streets are on that list. And yeah, I'm.
I thought for sure.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to pay. And, and I don't mind telling you, if you pave ours before you pave somebody else's, I don't have a problem with that.
Now, but you wouldn't believe, you would not believe how, how much, how much grief you, how much complaining you can get by paving a street. Would you believe that? By paving it. Two or three different ways. I've had complaints because now it's got a shoulder on it, the shoulder that is higher than what it was. I've had complaints, but now the traffic's running twenty-five mile an hour faster than it was to start with. I've got that complaint. I mean, I've had that complaint, and the number three complaints because I didn't do theirs and I done another one. You know, those, we get it hit all the way around, and I mean, don't. Don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining because of the complaints. It's just, I won't, I, I, I'm complaining, but I'm complaining because of negativity. People that wants to be negative about what's being done and not knowing, not knowing the effort of trying to make other things happen.
Well, I, I like I said, I appreciate what y'all have done. I also over here, people on the council, but I, I don't, I don't have no faces. That's all. Because like I said, my business, I bought into a business down in Littleport twenty-something years ago. It's why my business is not in Winfield.
Y'all need to move up here?
Uh.
Be closer to interstate.
Well, I've been trying to retire.
Go ahead, go.
Uh, and a lot of folks, I think, uh, speak out of their, of their orifice instead of their mouth because they're ignorant. And, and so this is the, I'm asking this question, as far as the cost that's incurred due demolition, not only to the house in our neighborhood, but wherever. Uh, is the property owner not, is he in any way responsible to reverse?
We, well, people, if, we did one right here behind the Caleb two. The tree fell on it. The process is, if they don't pay it, we have to put a lien, we have to file and go through the proper court procedures to put a lien against that property to make them pay for it. So to speak, it's just, it's, it's, we have to, we have to go through a process to get our money back. We won't get the money back immediately. I mean, I can promise you on these, we're not gonna get our money.
Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't, I just, I figured that, I don't think I was, like, the property owners got Scott Free, it's like, hey, thanks for claiming property for me.
No, no, but now, on that, on that grant that I was talking about on these twenty-eight houses, the property owner has to agree to have those tore down. I mean, that's another thing on that grant, to get that grant, the property owner has to sign off and agree to let us demo and take that house off. And a lot, most of them will because they don't wanna, they paying the property tax, and they don't have the money or don't wanna tear it down for whatever reason. They won't just let it fall or whatever. But the city, we can get a grant to do it, and that, and we would, we, we would have a match on it, be just, be another CDBG grant, we'd have a match on it. But those property owners have to agree to let us do it.
That's if you, if you give it a grant to do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, who did it June fifteenth on here on?
See, that's what I was kinda getting.
That's, that's fifteenth, assuming that someone bids?
It's just, yes, you know, there's, it's, it's, it's kind of a, I kinda put that date on there because it was put on, back to me, it came back to me. And I'm tired of it coming back to me, so we're fixing to do something about it. And then.
The agreement says that if significant, or if progress is not made to abide by the ordinance.
That ordinance is pretty clear now. After, after three or four council meetings ago, that ordinance is a lot clearer than it was before, correct?
So, it'll be more than somebody just coming in there and mowing the grass and taking a little?
No, ma'am. No.
Let me ask this. Uh, you said you don't have any bids on it yet. Uh.
It's not due yet. I mean, the bid's is out for, I think Sandy's done left, but I think that be, I think it's, uh, up to that date pretty much. It's up to that date.
Up to that date? All right. Uh, is there a, is, is there a, uh, maximum that you're looking at as far as what you're willing to put into it to do that?
No. I mean, we didn't, that's, that's why, as you know, it's bid process, but I mean, that, I mean, it's gonna be interesting. That's all I'm saying, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna say that I had a conversation with Jeff, two conversations during the COVID thing. And he was all, about this property. He was always very cordial, never fussed, never complained. Just a phone call of inquiry, very understanding of, of everything I said. And I explained to him that, that we were really handcuffed during the COVID thing because we'd been told we could have these Zoom meetings, but we weren't supposed to do anything unless it was absolutely imperative. And really, all we did, if you ever saw any of them, all we did was pay bills and the, the, the exact things we had to do, the statutory things that we have to do every meeting. That's all we did during the meetings. And I told him that we were meeting tonight. And I didn't, I, 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 I said, honestly, Jeff, I don't know where we are in that process, but we haven't had a meeting since March. Uh, so, y'all might want to come up there and just find out. And he didn't, he said, you know, we're not coming to complain or anything, and I said, I understand that, you just come and find out. So, uh, that's probably why they're here, is because they, they did have a conversation with me, and I acknowledge that, and said, y'all might wanna come and find out.
Well, uh, it was, uh, after that when we saw the, the sand love down there, and like I said, uh, I simply came up here tonight to express my appreciation to y'all for doing what you've done. I didn't come up here to bring up the streets.
But I've always been, I've always preached.
The streets will come later.
I always preach though.
Sir?
Don't count your chickens before they hatch.
I understand that.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I, I'm, I appreciate you coming to thank us or whatever, but let's, when it, when it, when it's done and done, we'll take the thank you. But until then, I mean, it's, because it's, it's not easy.
Yeah, it's difficult.
It's difficult.
My follow-up question to that is, if this were to fall through, that property belongs to somebody out there, we don't know who it is. If the city of Winfield then is out of it because it falls through, what is our next?
Yes.
What are our options?
Your, your option has laid on us, it's been laid on us. We, we have got to do what we've got to do to get it done. And I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't, that signs a little bit of a promise. And I don't like making promises unless I know that I can keep them. But I had to do something to get it, to, to get to myself, to, to, you know, I had to, I had, had to stop somewhere. And this virus didn't help me because we had scheduled the meetings to let this abatement board come in and do like it, like everything's laid out in the ordinance. But we've, we've been working on this for how long? Four years, is it four years? I think four years. I think going on four years, and time's time, time's up. You know, we gotta do something, and that's why we, I did what I did. But that, that, something's fixing to happen. And I mean, it's gonna have to happen soon because it doesn't put a deadline on it.
And we know you're working toward a goal, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I. I mean, I, 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 I don't, when I, I'm not one to shun people. I, I had to face you people, you guys, however you want me to put it, in this town. I had to face you. And I don't ever want to be one that, that a lot of people does me. Turns a head or goes down the other aisle to keep from meeting me. I will face you. You know, and that, but a lot of times you don't, you may think, well, he's full of hot air, go on and think it, but if I told you that I'm gonna work toward doing it, that's what I'm gonna do. And I mean, this whole, this whole, this whole, I let stuff bother me a lot of times more than I should. And I'm, and it's not really bothering me in the wrong way. It's, it's, there's one thing that I can't stand more than anything, is to have a problem I can't do something about. Your problem's my problem. Because I am in the leadership position of this city to carry out these ordinances. And you got an issue, and it declares in an ordinance that it's a reliable and, and a considered, that needs to be considered issue. It's on me. And these guys, to carry it out and carry that ordinance out. And a lot of times it's harder to do because of so much legalities, just like, I can go to jail for going to church during a dang pandemic, but I don't go to jail if I want to tear your building down, set it on fire, and turn your car over. You know what I'm saying? It's backwards, and that, that's what bothers me.
Well, let me just say too, uh, for, for all y'all to understand it. It's, uh, it's not, yes, we want it down, okay, because I'll be honest with you, uh, I think it's affecting the property values.
It does, it is.
You can't sell houses out there because of it. But, you know, when, when we first started this thing several years ago, my son and, and your boys were about the same age, they were young, and they were getting around, and, and you know how mischievous kids are going places like that. Well, you know, they kinda grew up.
Now there's grandkids.
Yeah, and now we, we've got other people who have moved in, okay, who have young kids. And that is still, that's a, that's a health hazard and a worry hazard that some of those kids see their umbrellas on those stairs inside there, their stairs go to the side of the pool, some of these younger kids go in there now. Fall out of those back windows or whatever, it's, it's a health hazard. There, there have to be rats and snakes.
Do, so you're saying if there's looting going on, they wouldn't even buy that house?
What I'm saying is, I wouldn't have, for maybe one or two of those looters to come down here and park that, as long as they, they go back.
But just know, I mean, I, 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 I think the council agrees with me, it, it's, it's come to a head.
Well, that's good, that's good, and, and on the street they'll do. Let me say this. When I talked to you several years ago, you told me then, you said, I will not make you a promise. I remember that. You told me what you would do, what you would try to do, and you done what you told me.
I'm gonna continue to do that. Because I gotta face you.
You never promised, I've never, I'm, you've never had me come and say, you told me you were gonna do it.
I know it, and I learned a long time ago, you don't, don't say something that you can't back up.
Well, we support you guys and what you're doing. Like I said, I see faces that I know, I, I, names I don't necessarily know. If you guys know who I am now, so, I'll be on the, I'll be careful.
I appreciate y'all coming.
You, I think y'all are for taking your time.
All right. All right, y'all go home and eat, I'll be behind you about an hour. See you, Jeff.
Y'all make, y'all make copies of that if you want to. I want y'all, that's just, that's, she was asking all those questions about what happens next, how, what, what's the, that's the procedure. Okay. That's just a copy. I've made some, I've written on it, but, I mean, y'all can copy that and hand it out if you want to.
All right, thank you.
And that is our procedure.
All right, next item on the agenda is Arrowhead Village area, Tommy Boy, Cherokee Avenue and Berry Road. You wanna tell Tommy to come back in? Huh?
He got a phone call, ain't he?
Oh, he get a call, I thought he had to go pick somebody up.
That's why you're tired at the beginning, man.
Huh?
That's why you're tired at the beginning, man.
Before the preaching start, I'd ask the preacher, get that money free.
All right, well, I think what he's here about was kinda probably what we've kinda went over a little bit. Everybody's familiar with Cherokee Avenue and Berry Road. Berry Road is a road that turns down by, that goes in from crossroads, you turn right and going toward Arrowhead. Those are two cupboards in there. I got an estimate, I don't wanna tell you the estimate because I feel like by request of different council members that we need to probably get three estimates. I've got an estimate on getting that fixed, and, and, and I had Mike Shaw, county engineer, come in and look at that and rec, make a recommendation on what, how, what we need to be doing to carry that water because it keeps washing that. and rec, make a recommendation on what, how, what we need to be doing to carry that water, because it keeps washing that water, that cupboard out. It's gonna take another forty-eight inch cupboard or a, I think they call it a flat sixty-four inch. One, I think one flat sixty-four or two, another forty-eight. I've got one estimate, I need to, I'm working on trying to get two more estimates. I had, had sent out a request from a one contractor, no response. Uh, I, I'm fixing to reach out to two more contractors, I, I feel like this is an emergency, I mean, uh. I guess Todd, I could ask Todd, um, if we need to put it out for bid, but we, first we had to vote to get it done. We had to vote to get it done, and then we vote to put it out for bid, and then we get the bids back, and then we gotta open the bids, and then we, then we give a notice to proceed on the bids. I was trying to get this, this particular, those particular spots under the emergency act, because it is an emergency. All three of those places to me are an emergency, because that, that, that cupboard's, that, that's gonna collapse down there. And we got loaded trucks and trailers coming down. And it's gonna collapse, and we got this issue over here at Regal Street that's flooding that house, and those people, that, if that washes, they can't get out. And then, then that, that on Berry Road, it, I mean, it's an issue.
So that one on Berry, uh, Regals, will be done by ground.
Yeah, but I, I have been informed that it hopefully would be done within six months.
So the other two that, you know, we can, we can vote tonight if you ask, I guess if you want to, that we could go ahead and get those bids out for those loans. To me, this one down here where all the water from about the school back comes down here, is that right?
Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, we can't afford it. If, if we get a grant.
Isn't it right, though, all the water from about the school, back this way?
It's done flooded, Joseph, it's done flooded Winfield, lot, dry cleaners gets it every, it's flooded every time they put that flume, you know, down by, that, that took care of it, that won't hold it. And, and I, and I hadn't said this, I don't know if he's noticed it, I hadn't said nothing to Rob, I don't know if he's noticed it, but I said in the last meeting that that header wall is, is about to give away, it did, it failed, yeah, I noticed it today. It's on the ground, right there at the intersection of, uh, Mallard Road and, uh, Midway, that, that header's on, that header's in the creek.
Okay, so, so, but you, you said we, we couldn't afford it, we, we need to do it, but?
We're gonna have to try to get a grant, I mean, that's, that's the only way that I can see that we can do it.
I thought you were.
EMA, I'm trying to get, I'm trying.
But you were talking about defining an emergency, so you could do it without?
That, I'm back up here, we're back and forth.
Okay.
I, I'm trying to get in, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm, well, to be honest with you, we can afford to do this one up here on Berry. We can afford to do that cupboard, but this one right here, I can't afford it unless FEMA steps in and helps me with that. We can afford a matcher, if there's a matcher, but I think FEMA money'd be a hundred percent, I think.
And then, and then the Regal, Regal is the, is the?
We, I'm applying for CDBG grant, so we don't have to, it's not a mer, it's not under the.
Which, by the way, he said, he said that, uh, most likely, given the video that he sent, severe, it will be awarded. And if, if we get awarded, it'll give us four more bonus points. So he said, the more bonus points you got, the better off you are for the next grant, so by all means do that versus this one down here, because of the, the people you're serving, and it is the only way in and out, the absolute only way in and out of that low income. And he said, that's, yes, I'll give you a bunch of bonus points, and then he said, that's, it's a no-brainer between that one and this one either. Even though it's an industrial road, he said, it's just a no-brainer, that you gotta go back.
See, the issue that we got down here, right down here on this one, that makes it expensive and hard to afford, you got a six-inch, you got a six-inch water line and an eight-inch, I think sewer line, that is this far, literally this far from the edge of the road. There's no shoulder there, and that's something, that's gonna have to be addressed to fix that the right way.
Well, the greater issue to me on that is, like I said before, all the water from that school up there, from there, everything, all this land and water comes this way, it runs right down to.
And another thing to keep into consideration, every time there's a tree cut, it increases.
Sure.
Every time the ground's graded, it increases.
That's right.
So, we, we're not only coming from the school, we're coming, we're, that from Red Oak Drive, all, all that water's coming underneath that antique building. Everything above that hill on Tahoe Road is coming this way.
That kind of the progress of the city is we don't know.
I, i- i- if, if that's the one you're talking about, is, I think that you need, the council would need to basically.
Well, I mean, I.
Determine that to be a, 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 an emergency situation that required, you know, immediate attention, and, and if, if we determine that, then I think you could do it with, it would be under fifty, would it, under the capital? That, that one up there, you talk about that we can afford, it'll be under fifty one. As a capital project, and, and, and finding an emergency, and just, if, if the council so, so approves, you can, instead of putting it out for bids.
But do I need to get three competitive bids, I'm not saying put out, you know, put.
That's what I'm saying, get, 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 get pricing, get pricing, like, how might we do?
If I've asked, if I've asked for three or four different contractors, and if I can't get one, if I can't get enough.
Well, I mean, I would just, I, I don't think you have to get, if you do it that way, you don't necessarily have to get the bids, you're getting the bids to get pricing, keep pricing competitive. It's not a, not a number of bids that you have to get, just keep, get competitive pricing so that you get the best price. If, if that's something that the council would find is, is an emergency situation, we couldn't wait.
What, what bothers me is if everybody's been keeping up with it for the last two years. In June, it starts these showers, and they don't, it will not, it won't stop till this time next year. I mean, that's when them rains actually start, they, they, it just keeps coming, I mean, we don't have hot, dry, we have hot, dry days, but two or three days later, we got a thunderstorm and downpours, I mean, it's, it's, it, I've, I've noticed the last two years trying to cut, hey, if you don't get it done usually in June, you're gonna have a hard time doing it, you might get one week that's clean. And it's gonna have to take some dry weather for them, you know what I'm saying, that's why I'm wanting to merge, put it under emergency, because it just takes so long to finally say, yeah, do it, I mean, we're looking at a month out right now, just sitting here talking about it. And that puts us in July.
You know, you and I just spoke about, I, I'm, you know, I'm kinda, you know, like what Todd was saying, you know, just get competitive pricing, you know, we can send them out tomorrow, whoever the three or four you had, put them in the mail tomorrow, send them out, and then come next Monday or Friday, if you haven't got a response, then we'll go from there, I just wanted to make it fair, you know, for the city, best price for the city is all I was looking at.
Yeah.
I mean, it was nothing, any other, man.
I always try to, I always try to get three bids, Angie, I always try to call three or four, just like doing air conditions, I try to get three or four when we do units, I mean, I just, I don't, by no means, somebody thinks I got a personal agenda, won't use this guy.
No, but I'm just thinking if we get, you know, if it was twelve dollars, eight dollars, or six dollars, you know what I'm saying, if they do, you know, the same work, is all I was saying. I just wanted to.
I mean, that's another thing too, if we put it, when I say out for bid, that means to run it in a paper. You need an architect to sign, to where everybody's bidding on the same thing, you know, versus me telling three contractors, this is what I want, and this is how I want it. But if I put it out for bid, I'm gonna have to have an architect come here and say, this is how you got it, and then that takes a little time, you know what I'm saying? That's why I'm gonna put that, classify that under emergency, but we're gonna do the, this here, that's an emergency, but we gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for that emergency.
Have you been told by anyone, uh, number on that?
I, I don't say it.
Could you show me on a piece of paper sometime?
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna continue to worse.
It is, and it's an old tanker or something, and it's collapsed, I mean, it's literally the metal's hanging down inside it. That's in the middle, not where the road sunk, that's in the middle, the road sunk on this end of it, but that piece hanging down's in the middle.
Yeah. You put that number out there, you men come in right at it, it's like, the thing will come in way under.
Both of them on the right going down. I think y'all's on the left too, ain't you? They on the left, got a gas line main on the left and water.
Main's on the right, and their service is on the left where the whole sun came out.
Where's the main at, on the right?
On the right?
Is it on further in the creek?
No, it's in the deep, he's sitting right there.
I think it's.
Well, then one of them may be a gas line instead of sewer, and that one, the, that road has pushed one of them.
We're right there.
One of them, one of them's like this, the joint. It's pushed out.
It's plastic now, they replaced it, right, because it used to be cast iron, you might be seeing old cast iron.
Yeah, it's still in there, but it's not used to.
It's not, it's still in there, but right when the water comes out, when it goes under the road and comes out, it's right, the cast iron.
There's two, but, there's three black lines down there, if I can remember right, there's one on the left, two on the right.
Yeah, but we're on the.
On the main bridge down there.
Yeah, one of them's gonna be a sewer, yeah.
Yeah, but we're, one of ours is there, but it's old, our cast iron.
I think y'all's on the left.
We've got plastic now.
You said it's on the right.
So, okay, where, where do you?
I'm gonna argue your gas.
Their valves on our right, on the right side.
So we can get y'all to move it, we can get y'all to move that now.
Directional board that creek.
Y'all got a black line there now, here we go.
Surely did, that ain't hanging on the bridge, more directional board that on that creek, did it?
So, let's hope, if we, if we're lucky, that that one line is, the sewer would be on the left side.
Yeah, we got all of our.
But I don't think it is, if the sewer's on the left side, and that owns a water line, that water line can be moved.
Yeah, I, you ain't gotta worry about ours, because ours was directional board.
Yep.
You ain't gotta worry about ours, it's plastic.
I need y'all if you will look at tomorrow and tell me which one's which.
Well, uh, but I know, I know what you're, one of them you're looking at, cast iron, because they broke one that, I was down in there. I went through the, I know exactly what that tunnel looks like, because I walked all through the tunnel, been a water knee-deep to get to the where it broke.
Alright, we, I'm gonna keep pushing forward on that, we're gonna do the grant up here, and I'll, uh, I'll get, try to get one or two more bids on that, and I'm gonna get with Rob and see if we can't get a FEMA, uh, help on this, this one here, but she's got some paperwork on she, on it today, which the EMA director has been telling me that FEMA's, Mike can help us on. He said that my project is gonna be the biggest one in the county, because everybody else has just reached out and kinda, oh, they've done fixed them, they won't pay back for what they spent on fixing them, but I got one, but, road by the sink. Alright, the next item on agenda is old business. Has anybody got any old business that hasn't been discussed?
Mayor, I, I got, I got one item I wanna ask about, I hate, I hate to, we've been here so long, I hate everybody looking.
It ain't been that long.
Keep your mouth shut, keep your mouth shut, uh.
We've been, wait, we're gonna make up for them fifteen-minute meetings we had, go right ahead.
That's right, that's right, uh. The, the agreement we had about, just, because you asked about it during the Zoom meeting, the agreement we had about holiday pay, if somebody comes in, is called in for holiday pay. I need to make sure I understand that, because I was working up, we're, we're gonna have to amend, you know, I told you, we haven't got it done yet, because we're gonna have to amend our personnel procedure on our compensation rates, because it, that affects it. But it's my understanding is that if I work, and I, I'll make sure I'm, if I work on a holiday, I get regular pay, plus I get a check from my holiday pay, so I get holiday pay and a regular check.
Right.
For that eight hours, okay? And what we're wanting to do is, that eight hours that I work, because everybody gets a holiday pay, you can get that holiday pay by sitting at the house. And so, if I come in and work, I'm being paid straight time for working, and I could've sat at home, and so, you're getting everything out of what you're paying for on that straight time, because they're actually here working. We wanna pay them time and half for being here and working. So what would happen is, that person that, that is called in on a holiday, they get their eight hours holiday at, at, at straight rate, and they get eight hours at time and a half.
It's what it ought to be.
So they get twelve hours.
That's what it should be, it's what it's not, that's what it should be.
Okay, that's what we're doing, okay, now, does that apply?
I mean, I'm just saying, that's my opinion.
Does that, I mean, that's what we agreed to, I think, I just wanna make sure I understood that that's what everybody, because Jimmy said something about that, well, that's, that's double time and a half. And somebody said, no, and I was like, well, wait a minute, it's, it's, it's two paychecks plus a half, so it's two and a half times. It's not double time and a half, but it's two and a half times the normal rate, because you're getting your holiday, you're getting regular rate plus half, so.
This is, this, this is what I was saying, see if I'm telling this, uh, you have a holiday, it, okay? Does the root, the thing states, if you have a holiday on a Monday, then the only way you can get time and a half is you gotta work eighty hours that week. If you, that holiday takes away from you, so.
Not everybody, not everybody, I, I, and it's just the eighty that I have a problem with, because some employees are paid on forty hours, we pay them eighty. We pay them eighty, but forty, you can, you can work eighty-four in a two-week period and still get four hours of overtime, if the four were the first week, if you worked forty-four in one week and forty in the next, you still get four hours, okay, because, but if you.
I understand the police department's different.
Yes.
And the fire department's different, their emergency, I mean, I understand, but the park, the street department, all that is eighty hours. And what I was getting at is, if they come in on a Good Friday, okay, to, to do the garbage or whatever they gotta do, or a tree falls, they get four hours, they come in and work four hours, they get, they should get four hours overtime. They should get time and a half for the each hours, and not, and they still getting their holiday pay, instead of getting straight time, they should get time and a half, if they just work four hours.
But I mean, that's basically what he's saying, that's basically.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not overtime.
But, but what I'm saying is, the way it's set up at, if, if they have to come in on a Saturday and it's a holiday, then all the.
Here's what I've seen, and Angie can, she, she does the checks, and I look at them and I sign them, is, is what I, is what bothers me is to see seventy-two hours, and then, and then a holiday put in to make the eighty.
That's not time.
Is that, you see what I'm saying?
But that's not time. You got seventy-two hours plus you got holiday, you got, you got a holiday pay, that's not time, that, that hours, those hours don't count, because you're not working.
Right, but is it supposed to be, is that, is that holiday, that holiday day, you're supposed to put it in to show is it, it making your eighty?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so, because if you put that holiday in to make your eighty, then you work four hours of overtime. You've got eighty-four to get four hours of overtime, but you don't get overtime.
There you caught on.
You don't get overtime, because the, the eight hours were not actual worked hours.
You're looking for eighty actual.
You've got to have, or forty, or, or for, depending on whether we're talking about fire and police versus street and everybody else.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
It goes back to actual hours' work.
Work, yeah, so you don't have eighty hours, you've got seventy-two hours plus a holiday, plus eight hours of holiday pay. You don't have seventy, you don't have eighty hours, eighty hours don't need to show up on your check. Seventy-two hours shows up on your check, plus a holiday.
Plus eight hours holiday, it should be listed on that check as holiday pay.
But it shouldn't say, it didn't say, say eight hours, because it, okay, a holiday's a holiday. If, if you work eight hours, you get paid for eight hours, so you don't have to put eight hours down, holiday for Mike Watkins or for, well, Mike's a salary, so it doesn't matter. But I mean, on an hourly employee, a holiday is eight hours of their hourly rate, so you can just put down for the holiday pay the amount of money you're paying them, not eight hours, because if you, if you, if you start calculating it by hours, that screws everything up for overtime purposes, is what I'm saying. Isn't that right, Mayor? It's just, that don't count toward hours, because it ain't hours.
If you don't work, it don't count.
It don't count.
Period.
Physically, if you're not physically present working, it don't count. But what you're saying, is what I'm trying to be clear on, is if they come in and work four hours, they get paid for six, time and a half.
Well, I'm just saying, if, I, I'm, okay, y'all, however you wanna word it on the check or whatever, I'm just saying, if them men have to come out at midnight because the trees fell out in the middle of the road, and they have to come out there with power saws and cut it, I feel like they already get time and a half, even though it falls on a holiday.
I think, I think that's what we've already agreed on.
Right, that, that, so y'all do all you want to on the holiday.
He just clarifying to make sure that we had it.
Right, but what I've been told is they get straight time, but when it's a holiday week, if it wasn't a holiday week, like you was talking about, they get overtime.
Right.
But I'm saying it don't matter if it's a holiday or not that week.
Uh, let's say, let's say, let's say Friday's a holiday, and they're gonna work, they're gonna work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and be off Friday.
Right.
Okay, that's a holiday, it's a holiday paid holiday. Okay, that's a holiday, it's a holiday paid holiday. Okay, the way they've been doing it is they get a separate check for that holiday.
Only for fire and police.
Fire.
Not the park.
Yeah, but hold on, hold on a minute, that, that's a paid day off. Their check is gonna be just like it was a straight forty. Because that's a paid day off, they get that day off. Now, if they get called in, because a tree fell, and they worked six hours, they're gonna get six hours of time and a half. That's what you're telling me, that's how, that's how we agree to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, you ain't got no questions, do you, Mike? You understand how it is, don't you? Angie's a little confused, that's why I want her to not ask me later.
No, she needs to understand it.
Yeah.
So, everybody's.
What part of it do you not understand, really, I mean?
What department are we talking about, everybody, or just?
Salary's not, salary's is no, no problem, you're gonna have to, Todd needs to explain to you, how Brett, Brett's and Allen's departments are, because they're on a different set of hours, and that's what's confusing.
Yeah, I, I understand them, I need to understand how you want the park and the street.
That, that's just like we just said.
You need to look at the mayor, he'll explain to you.
Okay, go.
If it's a holiday, they're gonna get straight pay. But if they call in, if Rob calls a guy in to come pick up the garbage, to keep him getting so far behind, every how many hours he works, that Rob turns in that he works on that day, he's gonna get time and a half that day.
Okay.
For those hours.
Those hours, yes.
But I, I, I don't like, I don't like the process of, if you work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and get thirty-two hours in, and we got a holiday on Friday, turn it into time card of forty hours, cause that ain't forty hours.
No, I think.
You turn it into time card of thirty-two hours and a holiday pay, just call it holiday pay, cause they don't change your hours. Cause we use hours to calculate overtime, and holiday pay don't, don't, don't change your hours.
Well, they just say, they just show you thirty-two hours work, and then you have eight hours of pay in holiday.
Or you just say holiday.
And we have to put it in our system like that to, um, you know, they accrue sick time and other things off actual hours work.
Yeah, but, but the holiday, the holiday, the holiday.
That's what I'm saying, it's hours work.
Yeah.
That's why I don't like those hours getting caught up in that.
Right, but the holiday, the holiday pay is the same rate pay.
Is your hourly rate.
Okay, if they work, come in and work, actually work, they're gonna get time and a half those hours.
Right.
So, they get time and a half for the time they work, plus they'll get their holiday.
Right.
At regular rate.
I mean, you see what I'm saying, they got six hours, you're gonna take what they make hourly, time one point five for those hours.
I mean, we have an overtime slot, so, I mean, it's not, and we have a holiday.
But that's not overtime. It's not overtime.
It really, uh, be halftime.
If you look at a paste-up, if you worked the last two years.
Forty, it'd be half.
To show.
Not time and a half, a half, cause they're getting paid time and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want, okay, I just don't want necessarily this to be classified as overtime.
Right.
Because this is, it, it's time and a half, which is what we pay overtime, but it's not technically overtime.
Right, it just.
I don't want it to be classified, right, I don't want it to be classified as overtime.
It just needs to have, it just needs to stay outside halftime.
Versus overtime, because overtime is something.
Halftime or something.
Screw up something about it, we're, we get, and that's what I'm worried about. Cause I'm telling you, it's, it's complicated, it really is.
Well, they both the same to me, and that's why you lost.
Right, but it, but when, 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 when the, when the.
Time and a half's the same.
When the wage, when the wage and hour board comes in and looks, if, if they're looking at overtime in hours, that's really important versus, we paid him, no, we didn't pay him time and a half, cause this was overtime, we paid him time and a half, because he came in and worked it off day.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we want, that's what we're trying to segregate out.
I, I can actually put another slot in there.
Yes, time and a half.
I agree with it.
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, let, let me ask this question, cause I know, one of our departments, I think, does this, I know some other towns departments, if you're called in, on a holiday or a nighttime in a storm, when you come in, you're guaranteed like two hours pay, or a set hour and a half.
Well, that's just like the police department used to, when they come in, if they had a random drug test, they turn in two hours minimum, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a minimum, if you're called in, you need to be able to bill for a minimum.
Does that need to be the same for each of these non-police, fire, so to speak, your street, your park? Does, do we need to have some type of policy, so everybody's?
Well, I think if you call, I think there ought to be a policy, if you're called in, if you're called in on an off time, or, or whatever, and let's say you've called in, it takes thirty minutes.
Right.
And you go back home, well, you've had to dress, come down here, do whatever thirty minutes, and at thirty minutes, it's time and a half, and really, you just wish you'd just stayed at the house.
Right.
Yeah, there needs to be a minimum, you, you get paid a minimum amount, just for having to respond. Yeah, I don't see a problem with that at all, as being a part of the policy.
So, you are, would you?
That's what I'm trying to.
For my standard.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and she, if, and I said it doesn't necessarily apply to y'all, but there are six circumstances where it might.
Yes.
Where you've got, where you've got an employee who's not scheduled to work, and it's a holiday. He's not on schedule to work, but he has to come in because of something.
I investigate.
Yeah, okay.
They have to be courted on an off day, does that apply?
On a holiday, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter on a holiday, we're talking about holidays, I think.
Yeah, this will just be, this will, uh, just the investigator. Just holiday.
You good?
Yeah. I'm good.
I'll get that prepared for the next meeting, to, to change the policy, then, I just wanna make sure I was.
On the same page.
Cause it is clear as mud, I'm telling you, it's, that, that kind of stuff is really, it's really, it can get complicated, you don't really, don't realize it is, but. Fair labor standards investigation, just tell them.
Has anybody else got any old business? Jimmy, just, is Jimmy under weather? All that we got is just what we got down here, I don't know if any of y'all go by, which measure make me think of most, I have one more item, old business, I don't have to draw the blank. Just handle boxes down here. Does anybody go by that? Y'all know why it's like that.
Yeah, how we?
But see, that's why we closed that, because that's how they, they going in there and doing that. Bottom line is, people just don't really play to, people just don't do what's right.
No, we didn't take shortcuts, they were running.
Oh, that, that being said, I mean, it's two.
Mayor, could we, could we put down there, maybe, or somewhere, a dumpster, again, that we've talked about, you know, I know we've talked about this through the years, I mean, could we not put a dumpster out somewhere, I mean, where they can get access to it, and let them put their stuff in, instead of piling it up like that, or, I mean, I don't, that, you're right, that was awful.
We got liability issues that we, that's why we took it, I mean, down here, we had issues of diving over in it, crawling over in it, you know, getting stuff out of it, I mean, it's just, it's really a no win-win deal on how the, but now, Rob is still opening that on Saturdays. First and third Saturdays, I mean, I, I, people just want it gone, they want it gone, bam, they don't wanna try to get it. I mean, I think every city has a lot of deals with that, because between here and Tuscaloosa, different places I go, I see couches sitting on the side of the road. There's a mattress been laying somewhere that I go by, it's been laying there for three months, inside the road. Can't pick it up while I'm in, I'd get run over, uh. I mean, I don't know the right answer for that, really, I mean, I, I meet people, people call me, I'll say, how much you got? And I said, bring it to the shop, and he throw it in my door, you know, I, I do that, I do that a good bit. People don't have a whole lot, but he's got a bag or two, and the thing's closed, and he needs somewhere to put it, I let him throw it in mine, throw it in mine. Whatever where there's ever been where those dumps are sitting, there's a pile around it, always.
We can't afford to be paying.
We don't want to have any boxes here.
Coming in too. You have a town, people coming in dumping.
Have you got another surveillance? That box, didn't I hear somebody say that there was a camera or something?
And it's almost like, y'all can do something, you can do something about trash, just stop hanging. So, if you can do something about trash at home, then you can do something about trash. Got your name on it.
Yeah, so on the side of the road.
And when you say on the side of the road, what about if it's?
Maybe you go reverse and go like that, Brett. Where do you go there?
One on Middle Art, Middle Art and, uh, down row four, that sign's propped up against the.
Well, they, they used to have, I think they had more of what was a doctor mile, I think we need to have a doctor sign. You go by and straighten one. In your neighborhood, you straighten one.
And the sign on that last dump truck we got, that ain't got no sign on it either.
Have you noticed it, Brett?
Sign?
On a dump truck.
You know, it's got the, the city seal. Dump truck, you ain't got one on it.
I have not. You noticed it?
I am, I see it every day.
Did you see it, Todd?
I didn't know we had a dump truck.
It's a garbage truck.
When I say dumpster truck?
It's a new garbage truck.
New garbage truck. Yeah, garbage trucks, sorry, I didn't mean, I was thinking garbage truck.
It's a new garbage truck.
I don't even know why, I didn't ask everybody.
I'll say something, Rob, about getting that done, uh.
Well, somebody's, somebody's tired of their signs, damn those.
Well, you waited, they haven't lived, huh?
Somebody is tired of their signs. Cause they're, they're leaning up and get, they take our poles up, and they lean them, they lean them up to get the other sign.
These are white fields around here, they fix them.
The sign's still on?
The sign is missing.
But the signs aren't, and why are they taking the pole up?
So, don't do anything. Question, how do y'all, has, have y'all had, since we put the, the, uh, radar sign out, has anybody said anything about the places that we've driven? If it's made a difference, I mean, I know it is as far as my data, I just didn't know if anybody said anything.
Well, it's made a difference as far as me. Cause I'm telling you, every time, every time I'm coming down Red Oak Drive right now, I have to hit the brakes by the time I get to that house with the, with the fifth wheel trailer. I hit the brakes, cause I like, I know that flashing signs didn't get me.
They, they are, because I was running twenty-nine, and he told me to slow down, remember, I didn't.
Twenty-nine, slow with me.
Yeah, and I didn't know it was twenty-five, he said, slow down.
Twenty-five, twenty-five mile an hour.
It's crazy. I think I'm doing good, I'm getting, I get twenty-nine or thirty that says, slow down, I'm like.
I mean, this, uh, it's that time of year, y'all want to, put together two or three streets to, to look at, if I can work this deal out on these other issues.
Sure.
I really would, I really, I have talked to Tim Estes about Clay Street, I wish y'all would go by, if you hadn't seen it, go by and look at Clay Street. I'm not sure, I didn't count the houses over there, uh, but I need you to look at Clay Street, and then this, uh, off, you go down Red Oak, turn right, um. That regal?
Regent.
Regent, need to check Regent.
Thank you for giving my phone.
Tim, on your way home, go down Red Oak, turn right on Regent.
Red Oak, right over.
Yeah.
Mayor's part of Clay Street, the county.
That's a good question, before, I've, I've gotta look at the city limit thing, because right past is not the city limit.
Right side is in, left side's out.
That's why I talked to Tim Estes about, let's, uh, chip ceiling now.
Oh, you talking about chip ceiling, and you, they was running here?
Clay Street's all one time like chip ceiling, uh. And I need you to look at, uh,
I don't know, I mean, you may.
I need you to look at, uh, uh, let me stick right here, uh, Ridgeway. Ridgeway or no? Road goes down beside Ridgeway, goes to.
Bone, Bone Road, Road, Bone, Marcus's, uh, Bone Grove Road.
Cause I think that, I think on that one road, it's a, Bone, Ridgeway's the one that, that, that goes upon a, a box to. I think that we might need to consider chip ceiling that. Two cars can't beat on it. I think we do asphalt, it needs to be, uh, double lane, and well-used.
What one are you talking about?
Not Ridgeway, I mean, Ridgeway, not Bone Grove.
That wasn't a bad home.
You can't go down, you can't go down neither one of them.
But that's, that's the one.
Phone bad.
Yeah, that's a bad home.
Have y'all, are you familiar with Bone Grove? Are y'all familiar with it?
Yeah.
I need, I need to look at it, and, and then y'all come back and tell me your idea on whether or not paving or chip ceiling. That's where it goes on, comes out of the guard shed.
Comes out of the guard shed.
I had these up for you in this hour.
But Brett, let me throw that out, let me tell you this, Brett asked y'all about the sign. It's had, they had the old girl on, on, uh, Highland Road.
Yeah.
Tell them traffic count.
Twenty-four hours.
You did twenty-four hours?
You wanted a twenty-four hour count, that you gave me?
Blown my mind. Eight hundred and something vehicles.
Oh, I was close.
Yeah, it was like, in some ways, it was bumping eight hundred.
Eight hundred something, those vehicles coming down, they're coming down, a lot of them, now, some of them's coming over the railroad coming that way, but a lot of them coming out of Tiffy, going back to Tiffy. That's about the time that they get off it.
What, what have you got on Red Oak so far, what's your, what's your numbers on Red Oak?
I had to go.
Then it's a basic little road.
I had to go to the camp, it, it was initially named, I had to think that school's not in, so you completely took that traffic out.
Yeah.
And it was still, uh, I don't remember, I don't, I don't remember. It was unreal, I mean, it, it blew my mind, I.
That's why that east bypass needed to have been done.
But those signs, I'm gonna tell you, it does. How many, how many?
We can get another.
It does way more than I thought.
Yeah, you need to get another, I'm telling you, they'll give, they'll let you buy another, you need to get another one, they're saying, they work.
It takes us now that we.
He's already, he's mentioned that, and I, I just.
It does work.
He's mentioned that, it definitely worked, it definitely, it's definitely working, I've had people tell me that it works. And, and, and it's got, Brett, it's got a spell mode, you know, where it's, uh,
Our.
It's not off.
Mayor, I'd like to see us if that's the case, I'd like to just see us one that we can get, you know, that's on the wheels that, you know, that we can pull up to the interstate or, the high, not interstate, the highway out here, you know, like I was telling you about, that I saw the morning coming in.
It's to the mountain.
Yeah, and it flashes up like a Christmas tree, and it slows you down quickly.
Well, I'm still, I'm still looking for one of those through the ten thirty three road.
Now, that's one, that one we gotta slow you down quickly.
Yeah, that's what, see, really, it works, cause people just, a lot of people just need reminding, okay? Yeah, that's what, see, really, it works, because people just, a lot of people just need reminding. Did you cut this guy back there? They just need to remind me.
No, we died.
Yeah.
You talked about when they been died.
They know it's not gonna, you know, it's not, can't you keep, nothing happening, it's gonna keep blowing.
Take two hours to go.
My back's killing me.
I can shut the computer down.
I need to ask for, nobody else got any of the old business, I need to ask for.
Motion to, uh, pay the bills. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
I'm in favor.
Tim, you pay?
Paying the bills. Uh, I'll think whatever that old business is, um, uh, next time I'm doing this, I need to ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I'm in favor.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.